I completely agree. It's all wires, it's not a future.
So, another point, so I see a public comment, it's in your ten years, the public hearing. But that is also a cool public comment, because that's what we should speak about. So, the public comment section of yours is set aside for comments.
You can't see it. It's getting old, dude. You gotta wear reading glasses, finally.
It looks sharp, though.
Oh, they're an old pair. I wonder if it'll spend a ton of money on it.
It's up here, I'm looking down here.
Red is on red.
Where is it? Oh, okay. If you push your button, your microphone will turn red if you want.
Everybody good? Okay. We'll go ahead and get started here. This is the Francis City Council meeting for March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. Clint, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the public of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just real quick, one point of order. Ma'am, if you guys right behind staff can find another place to stand, I know we're really full, I just don't want you really right behind staff, they aren't comfortable with that. Thank you, sorry, I know that's a bit of an ask, we're clear full, so, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent of the, or the consent agenda, the approval of the invoice and invoice register and the minutes. I'll take any comment from council on minutes and/or the check register.
I just have a comment, what bleachers or benches did we get, for what park?
There's benches for, I'm not sure exactly which ones these are.
We're just gonna spread them out.
Yeah, there's been some for various locations.
Yeah, so we had some grant money that we used, the Summit County Route Tax, those are going in at the new Wild Willow Bike Park.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Anything else?
And I'll make the motion to pass the minutes and check register, the check register two fourteen to three thirteen, twenty twenty-five.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Sam. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. I'll pass this along if you'll initial it. The next item is the public comment period. This is a, this is a public comment period set aside for comments that, for items that are not on the agenda. There is a public hearing tonight, so comments related to the public hearing should be held for, for that. So if there's any public comment for items that are not on the agenda, we'll open the public comment period now. Yeah, one second.
I think they were. Okay. Think that I got him? Let me know if that is better or not, Jeff.
Hi, I'm Mary Morrell, and I live in the Republic Subdivision, and I request the city and the city council to consider putting no parking signs along Seneca Heights Drive in the new Hunter Commons subdivision.
Right now, the contractors and the construction workers are parking on the street, and you can't get two cars past each other on that street. And when those townhomes get sold and occupied, they're all gonna be parked on that street. So there won't be any room for snow removal or people passing on the street. So just make a consideration if you would.
Thank you, that was Seneca Heights?
Seneca Heights.
Okay.
Is the street?
I'll make a note, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment for items not on the agenda?
Kimberly Lawson, six ninety Spruce Way. I also wanted to talk about Francis comments. So I've noticed that the front of the project is up for sale. And I know it says in our mission statement that we want to grow business faster than we want to grow residential. But that business is now up for sale, and it could possibly sit there for years. And what it looks like is Ivory Homes comes in, and they have their way with us, and they just throw in ninety-six homes in townhomes, and now we're not getting any business out of it at all. I'm gonna assume it's because we don't have a developer's agreement in place. And we're the city, they should be doing what we want them to do. And I suggest that from now on, we have a developer's agreement. The city needs to look out for the citizens of the community and not the developer, right? We wanna get the money, we're not saying we don't want to grow business, but we need to make sure that the developers are doing what we've asked them to do, and not just let that business property sit there for years on end now while we wait. I just, I don't want to see another property grab like Ivory Homes did this time. And then also, I just wanted to ask, what we're doing about extending Hallam Lane to two hundred South? Because I think we're behind the curveball with mitigating traffic off of Main Street. The traffic's getting pretty bad on Main, and if we can extend Hallam to Second South, like we've talked, I think that's gonna be really beneficial to help mitigate all the traffic that we saw in Maine, see on Main Street. And I know we've had discussions about asking CAMUS and the county to help us out with that, but I think we are really behind the curveball on getting that going. That's all.
Thanks. Okay, anything else?
My name is Ted Sproth, I live in Francis. I walk the block around Hallam and Hilltop daily, and I find the traffic is increasingly traveling at high rates of speed. And I know if the extension of Hallam is completed, it will only get worse. So I'd like to see some traffic enforcement on Hallam and on Hilltop. Like to see the roads improve too, but I'd prefer just to give people a slowdown.
Thank you.
Lindsay Hancock, five five one Aspen Road. I want to give comments on the city center. It's not on, the public hearing is not listed there, so can I give some?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, perfect. I urge you to deny the proposed fourth story for the city center hotel that you're about to vote on. It violates the city code eighteen dash four five dash one five zero states. Facilities that require late night customers and activities shall be located away from residential areas. I don't see how shall be located away, and literally on top of one another, can even be legally interpreted. Number two, the parking situation is a complete disaster. They're supposed to have two hundred and fifty-five stalls, they have fifty-three reciprocal stalls, and twenty-three which are city-funded taxpayer stalls. The number of people that are out here right now, we wouldn't even be able to gather, because the hotel would be taking our stalls. The third reason is the emergency access. If a fire truck, ambulance, or police couldn't get in there, that liability is on the city, and then would turn to us as taxpayer, as taxpayers if there's a city lawsuit. So, and the city just got a new fire truck, I don't know if there's, have there been any studies on whether or not that fire truck can even enter with the parking situation?
It's a tiller ladder, so the back end stairs.
That's, that's a question for the fire department, I don't know the answer to that.
I would urge you, before you vote on that, to find that out, because I think this is new information that's coming, and it seems to be thrown together, so.
One thing I will point out is every project in the city gets the approval of the fire department before it can be built, so that would already be considered.
Okay, but maybe just consider that when you're voting today on the fourth story. There are several groups of residents who are consulting attorneys to challenge these projects in court. If the city fails to enforce its own zoning laws, it will face lawsuits, and taxpayers will foot the bill. Here are the potential lawsuits. Failure to enforce Francis City Code eighteen dot dash four five dash one seven zero. Public nuisance lawsuits due to congestion, safety hazards, and property devaluation. Personal laundry, personal injury lawsuits if pedestrians or motorists are harmed due to the foreseeable dangers and with all the inadequate parking. So I would just encourage you to vote no on the four stories, thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Tim Matthews on Ash Court. I just have another comment about the four-story deal. That I think everybody that is against this hotel is against it for various reasons, but one issue is, and McKenna brought it up during your meeting a couple of weeks ago and got shut down, that having that four-story disappear and turn into a three-story just by making attics on the fourth floor doesn't accomplish anything. I mean, it, it's still four stories, a floor is a floor. Whether you put people in it or whether you put stuff in it, a floor is a floor. And I think that was, McKenna was correct in her coming out and saying that's disingenuous for Rusty to do what he did and bring that up that way.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Sorry, it took a minute to weave.
That's all right.
Weave through everybody. My name's Bob Wheaton, I live on Highway thirty-five. And I'd just like to offer a comment on the four-story, proposed four-story amendment to the city code. And right now, the city code is three stories, which we all know. The applicant submitted a plan, it was a four-story building, which was submitted against city code. When the request was made to submit a rendering for a three-story hotel, the response was, we'll resubmit the same thing, only the top story will be open attic space. When you look at the building as proposed right now, it is a four-story building. And even though you have fifteen feet of attic space, a reasonable look at the proposal is, if it looks like a duck, and it walks like a duck, it's a duck. And what's proposed is a duck, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period, and we'll move into the rest of the agenda. The next item is the public hearing for the Hotel Highlands Commerce Center, conditional use permit. Katie has a staff report, we'll go into that, and then we'll open the public hearing.
Okay. All right, thank you. So I'm gonna assume that most of you on the council have read my report, I'm not gonna read every word of it. I'm gonna try to hit the highlights in the interest of time. So, just want to point out that this report was written by myself and Brad Christopherson, the city attorney. And this report is for both the conditional use permit and the commercial development. So they're both covered under here, I realize it's two separate agenda items, but there, there's a lot of things that are the same, so it made sense to just combine the report. And then a reminder that this is, these are both administrative items that we're looking at tonight. So first, let's look at the location. So. All right. It's on the, the proposed site is the northwest corner of State Road thirty-two and Lambert Lane. It's parcel FT six-ten. The parcel is nine point nine-two acres, and it's in the C-one commercial zone. I'm gonna switch over to the site plan. Sorry, I have these all up on my screen in my office, and they look great in here. I might have to make some adjustments, okay, that looks pretty good. So. What's, this is the site plan for the entire site. What we're focusing on here tonight is the hotel site, which is the one that's kind of in the middle. You can see it better on. Hard to scroll on the other plan, but that's okay. Here we go. Okay, so Harwood Development LLC is proposing a three-story sixty-nine-room hotel as part of the Francis Highlands Commerce Center. They have future plans for subdividing the parcel and commercially developing the remainder of the site. Those will be forthcoming and will be reviewed separately. In my staff report, I list quite a bit of general plan guidance, but I think you're all fairly familiar with that from the concept plan reviews that we went through. So I'm gonna skip to looking at the parking. So that is shown, maybe the best on the landscape plan, you get a better idea, I think, for everything, so. In our code, one parking stall per room, per hotel room is required by the code. There are sixty-nine parking stalls required for this hotel project. The applicant is providing eighty parking stalls, including sixteen spaces for trucks and trailers, and four ADA stalls. Some parking is located between a future building and the front of the hotel. Most of the parking is planned behind the hotel. And from my review, I can see that the parking plan complies with the code. Moving on to the civil plans, I'm gonna let Scott cover this a little bit more later in his staff report. Again, it just looks way different here, it takes a minute to load. Okay, so from my review, I can see that they are meeting the setback requirements. And, but the city engineer does determine a lot of the, whether we're compliant with a lot of the city codes and standards on that, so I'll let him come back to that in a minute. Next topic that I'm covering is architectural design and materials. That's a bioswirl, we'll come back to that. Okay. So. In our commercial zone, this is what our code says about architecture. The treatment of building mass materials and exterior pertinences shall create an aesthetically pleasing building and site that is in character with the proportions of other surrounding developments. Proposed developments shall be designed with a common theme that reflects the heritage and community of Francis City. Themes shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission and City Council, and may include, but are not limited to agricultural or mountain tourism. The maximum building height in the commercial zone is forty feet. The applicant provided architectural renderings and elevations of the hotel. A three-story hotel with a height below forty feet is planned. Facade shifts occur on all sides of the building. Let me show you those plans. And, okay. So here are all the different side renderings, this is the front, the ends, and then the back. You can come back to these later if you'd like to. These are the materials that are planned. So. They have a wood siding in the front, and black trim, stone, let's see. Have a metal roofing in some portions, looks like most portions, and a painted lap board, and then the exterior stone. So these are the materials that they're planning to use. The architectural theme appears to be agriculture with modern farmhouse design materials and elements. This design theme ties in with the Route thirty-two development, which is planned nearby. The premier pet lodge and villages at Lambert Lane subdivision also utilize agricultural design themes. So where this one's a little more open-ended, I would advise you to discuss whether the applicant has effectively designed an aesthetically pleasing building that complies with the design guidelines. Okay, next, moving on to the outdoor lighting plan. Okay, this is a lot, but all of these, not all the little dots, but there's certain areas, like where there's the wording, those identify lighting locations. There's a table down here, that I think is probably the best for us to focus on for this. But. The proposed hotel lot is two point one-three acres, which allows up to two hundred and thirteen thousand lumens for our code. The applicant is planning a mix of parking lot lights, wall lights, entrance lights, and decorative lights. A list and quantity of outdoor lights is shown on the table. All fixtures are full cutoff and will be installed at a height at or below eighteen feet. That complies with our code, when it's near a residential zone, they have to be at or below eighteen feet. The total output planned is two hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and seventy-one lumens, below the maximum allowed. The applicant noted that outdoor lighting intensity will be reduced after eleven P.M. The Francis City Code gives an exception to this requirement for operations that are open twenty-four hours, such as a hotel. But, you know, they're, they're willing to reduce that intensity after eleven. So the outdoor lighting plan does comply, comply with the Francis City Code. All right. That's it for the commercial development portion. Like I said before, these are all kind of intertwined, so now I'm gonna be talking more about the conditional uses. And then we can discuss any of it once we finish up. Let's see, I'm gonna go back to. And, sorry, pardon my scrolling. Okay. Hotel conditional uses. So first, let's look at, this is the state code. One portion of that says that a land use authority shall approve a conditional use if reasonable conditions are proposed or can be imposed to mitigate the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use in accordance with applicable standards. So that is the focus of my report here with this conditional use, is looking at the detrimental effects, and whether or not those can be mitigated. Our city code lists several standards for review when we're considering a conditional use. Some of these we've already talked about, like size and location of the site, and Scott will cover the traffic considerations. We've considered some of those already with the commercial development review, but keep that in mind as we continue with the conditional use as well. The ones that I'm gonna be focusing on the most in my report are number five, fencing, screening, and landscaping, signage and lighting, noise, vibration, pollution, odors, mostly the noise part of that, and the potential adverse impact on the, on property values, which is number eleven, and those who live or own property in the vicinity. So Scott, he's gonna cover the traffic impact study in his portion. Anyway. So we'll keep these standards in mind, the detrimental effects we're looking at will be related to these standards. So staff have identified the following potential reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed conditional use to adjoining residential properties. Disruption of privacy, additional noise, outdoor lighting, additional traffic, decreased property value, and decreased enjoyment of property. So first, let's look at the standard number five, fencing, screening, landscaping buffers, and see how the, how what they've planned is helping to mitigate some of these detrimental effects. Okay, so. The point of this section is to, in this case, provide physical and visual protection between commercial and residential uses. So that's the goal of, of these buffers and landscaping, fences and barriers. So. The code says, where differing uses are to be developed adjacent to existing residential areas, special considerations shall be made to protect the privacy of residents, and requirements shall be at the discretion of the Planning Commission and City Council. The applicant is proposing an eight-foot tan composite fence along the western property boundary, so right back here. They're also proposing a landscaping buffer of a raised berm and evergreen trees. So that's what these trees are back here, they're evergreens along the fence line. Additionally, outdoor amenities, balconies, and opening windows on the backside of the property were eliminated to ensure existing residents' privacy. The applicant's plan for fencing trees, outdoor amenities, balconies, and windows will mitigate the detrimental effects of disruption of privacy, additional noise, and outdoor lighting. There's also another section of our buffer code that talks about facilities that require late night customers and activities, that shall be, says it shall be located away from residential areas to reasonably prevent disruption of privacy. So the phrases "late night" and "away from" in this section of code are subjective and can be interpreted differently by different people. Staff are working on an update to make it objective and to bring it into compliance with state law. Although staff do not recommend denying the conditional use permit because of this section as currently written, we do recommend setting a condition, that there be a distance buffer of fifty feet between the hotel structure and the residential property line. Okay, next, moving on to signage. Okay. So the applicant is planning a monument sign and a wall sign for the hotel. Both signs comply with the Francis City signage code. Sign lighting may be used but will not face the properties of existing residents. No detrimental effects are anticipated from the planned signs. This is the wall sign shown on this page. It doesn't extend above the wall, and it's within the size requirements of the city. And then this is the monument sign, and also meets the requirements of the city. Next, looking at outdoor lighting, I'm not gonna go back to that since we just talked about it, but just as a reminder, the, the applicant was below the, the maximum amount of lumens that the city's dark side, sky code allows. And all the fixtures are full cutoff, they're directing the light downward, and that they are gonna reduce the lighting after eleven P.M. So the applicant's plan for fencing a landscape buffer and reduce lighting intensity during late hours will mitigate the detrimental effects of outdoor lighting. Okay, next up is noise or odors. We conducted a noise disturbance study. This was done back in February. We went out to the site at different times during the day and took a base noise measurement level. And then we also took some noises from expected disturbances, such as a large diesel truck, loud talking, that was two people talking really loud, and a truck door slamming. And we compared those disturbances and the base level to our code. Here is our noise disturbance code. So the noise disturbance study performed by the city concludes that the detrimental effects of additional noise can be mitigated with the applicant's plans for a privacy fence and a landscape buffer on the adjoining residential property line. Also restricted daytime delivery hours, low decibel HVAC units, and the elimination of outdoor amenities, balconies, and opening windows on the rear of the building. So all those things will help mitigate the detrimental effect of noise. Okay. The last one that we're going to look at is the property value and property use. The city has no specific evidence of property value changes associated with the project. A review of literature on the impacts of commercial development on nearby residential is inconclusive. Residential properties bore to the project on the west. The site plan has mitigation with fencing and landscaping to reduce noise and lighting impacts, and the applicant has agreed to additional conditions, so the impact complies with the code. The residential properties are all, at least. The residential properties are all at least 150 feet from the hotel. The project is facing State Road 32, which is the largest and most traveled road in Camas Valley. It is also located in the commercial zone, which was created to encourage commercial development with access on the main arterial road. It is not unreasonable that development would arrive at this location. Other commercial projects are located near the State Road 32 and Lambert Lane intersection. There are no commercial or city center zones that are not abutting, adjacent, or across the street from residential areas. This proposed project will not prevent any of the uses currently surrounding the project, but will bring increased traffic, noise, and lighting. These anticipated increases can be mitigated with measures taken by the applicant and the conditions proposed by staff. Okay, now I'm going to get into the planning commission recommendation. Sorry, wrong report there. Okay. So the planning commission reviewed this item at their February meeting. They approved the trash storage and landscape plans. So we're not even going to talk about those too much tonight because they've already been approved. But the parking, they gave it a positive recommendation, affording it to, with that recommendation, three to one. Site plan also had a positive recommendation, three to one, with a condition that the applicant follow the city engineer's recommendations. Architectural design and outdoor lighting were also positive, three to one. Here are the conditions that they recommended for the conditional use permit. They were the same conditions that I had in my staff report at the time, except for the areas that are underlined. They wanted, they suggested, recommended a northern subdivision boundary, and they also recommended evergreen tree buffer on the north boundary of Village East subdivision as shown on the large formal rendering. So they had added, just to summarize that, the eight-foot fence on the northern subdivision boundary and the tree buffer on the northern boundary. So that's where those two new homes, Village East, they're on that north boundary. Okay, my conditions that I'm... Oh, sorry, I meant to go into that, a little bit of discussion there. Two commissioners positively recommended the approval of the hotel CUP and felt that it complies with the city code and that the detrimental effects can be mitigated with the conditions listed above. Two commissioners negatively recommended approval of the CUP. One of those commissioners complimented the applicant on the design landscaping and mitigation measures taken, but was ultimately concerned about the section of code regarding late-night customers and activities. And the other commissioner cited the negative public sentiment in making their decision. As a note, and this is just good to keep this in mind as we evaluate the conditional use, this is from the property rights and ombudsman's office, says, "The land use authority may receive input from the public for the purpose of gathering facts and evidence to support its conclusions and its decision, but they may not rely on public opinion or preferences when making a decision." The Utah Land Use Institute says, "Public clamor is appropriate when legislative issues are considered, but is not sufficient evidence upon which to base an administrative decision. For those, it should not be taken into account. Opinions by those without particular expertise are not substantial evidence and cannot justify disregarding the opinion of a qualified professional." All right, my recommendations here. Parking, approve, it meets the code. Site plan, follow the city engineer's recommendation. Architectural design, approve or deny, need to discuss whether it effectively meets the design guidelines. Outdoor lighting plan, approve, it meets the code. Hotel conditional use, I positively recommend approval with the following conditions. Eight-foot composite privacy fencing on western boundary, raised berm and evergreen tree buffer on western boundary as shown on the landscape plan. Delivery is only allowed during daytime hours from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Installation of low-decibel HVAC equipment. Elimination of outdoor amenities, balconies, and opening windows on the rear of the building. Reduced lighting intensity during late hours, 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. No parking signage on Lambert Lane. This one was added since the planning commission recommendation. Distance buffer of 50 feet between the hotel structure and the residential property line, and any additional conditions recommended by the city engineer. This is a public hearing for the conditional use permit. It was noticed in accordance with state and local law. A public hearing is not required for the commercial development application. I do have a letter from the applicant that they requested I read, so let me know when you're ready for that, but that's it for me.
Okay. We have Jamie with us tonight, in place of our city attorney. Our city attorney is really sick, so he wasn't able to come, so his law partner Jamie's here. Will you just speak a little bit to the conditional use permit process and some of those things that we need to be considering when it comes to this review?
Happy to do it. Thank you, Mayor. And your staff report was excellent, by the way, on the law, so I'm going to cut a few things out just to avoid duplication. My name is Jamie Blakesley. I'm with the law firm Hayes-Godfrey-Bell. Our firm provides city attorney services to Francis. You'll usually see my law partner Brad Christopherson here in the seat, but he's under the weather today, as the mayor mentioned, and I'm here. I wanted to give just a really brief two- or three-minute orientation as to the law, the purpose of the hearing, what the city council can and can't consider when they're looking at a conditional use permit, and then maybe a little bit of instruction to those that wish to offer comment on this of what kinds of comments might be helpful to the city and what kinds of comments, although important to you all and to your community, are not things that the council is allowed to consider under state law, meaning if they consider them, a court will frown on that kind of behavior. So the way state law is structured is that the state is the entity within our... the state is the entity that has land use control over land uses throughout the state. They then delegate that authority in some circumstances to counties and then within municipal boundaries to cities, which means the city can make land use laws that control what kinds of uses occur, where they occur, what the characteristics of those uses are, within the parameters established by state and federal law. And sometimes there's a rub between the local ordinance and state and federal law. Usually, the way those are structured and the way state code sets it up is that cities establish lists of what are called permitted uses and then lists of what are conditional uses, and then they have also lists of uses that are not permitted or are not allowed under any circumstance. And the city's divided into zones, and those zones define what uses are permitted, what uses are not permitted, what uses are conditional. A permitted use essentially means if it's on the list, then a landowner can make use of the property in that way. And it's just a matter of looking at the list and then a bit of a check-the-box exercise to see, is it on the list? And then if it is on the list, is it designed in a way that meets with the code? Do they have utilities? Do they have setbacks? Is the architecture correct? And if it is, state law really is, it tilts the direction of private property rights in Utah over the rest of the city to regulate. Conditional uses are a little bit unique. Sometimes when we hear conditional in normal language, we think, well, it's only allowed if we want it to be allowed. And then the assumption is, well, if we're loud enough that we don't want it, then the city council will have to say no, because democracy is, if more people want it or don't want it, then want it, then they would have to disallow it. Unfortunately, state law is not written that way. A conditional use is still an allowed use. What it means is that you can put into your code what are called standards. Standards are the things Katie went through that are listed in your code, and the examples that are applicable here are things like traffic, fencing, and privacy, noise. And if you have standards written in your code, you then can say to the developer, "We can allow the use if you include things in the development that mitigate those negative effects in those areas that are listed in your statute." But the city can only disallow the use if there are not reasonable conditions that can address those standards. And they can only impose standards if they have evidence to support that. And the evidence has to be actual evidence, the kind of evidence that would be admitted in court. So you have in the packet a lot of things that are like traffic reports, lighting reports, noise reports, and studies. Evidence is not allowed to be speculative. A court will frown on that. So if you say, for example, "Well, somebody was murdered once at a hotel in St. George," that's too remote for the council to be able to consider that kind of evidence. But if you had a study or a report or actual observed information, then that would be helpful. So a couple of other things and then an instruction on comments. I mentioned conflicts with federal or state law. The legislature is so active in land use law that every year we see updates to the code, and inevitably, as much as you try to keep pace with it, there are aspects of city code that sometimes are at odds with state law. And so the state law has put into it a provision that says, if there are what they call ambiguities or questions about how to read something or how to interpret it, you always have to interpret the ambiguities in favor of the landowner or the applicant. And that makes it difficult for cities sometimes, but the principle underlying it is Utah is a state that respects private property rights over almost anything else. And so when we're looking at some things that are written in the code, if there's a question of how do you interpret it, or is it in line with what state law allows, we have to read it to the benefit of the applicant, or else we invite legal action on the city. The other thing Katie mentioned that is really applicable is there are many, many, many cases in Utah that instruct cities that public clamor cannot be considered in like an up or down vote on whether a development moves forward. But if the public shares evidence-level information about the development, the city council can consider that. So I would encourage those that wish to make comment on this, that if your comment includes evidence, then it has more bearing and more weight on what the council can and can't do. If what you stand up and say is, "I don't like hotels," or "I don't want a hotel in my neighborhood," that's valid, and you're entitled to feel that and you're entitled to express that. The council unfortunately can't consider that under the law when it's making its decision. And so it gets a little tricky for the council in their seats because if they get a lot of people that say they don't like it, but those people don't provide any information to them, then they don't have anything to go off of when making that choice. So I'll end it there. I hope that's a helpful orientation as to the position the council's in, what they can and can't consider, and then how to make this choice.
Before we move forward, one other thing, maybe you can clarify just a little bit with, if you're familiar, the section of our code that mentions specifically the words "away from" and the "late-night customers," those types of things. We've seen some recommendations, not only from our own attorney, but also from the property rights ombudsman's office, that talk about those issues within our city code that we recognize are there, but do you want to speak on that just a little bit?
Yeah, sure, I'd be happy to speak with it. This is the one area of your code that has been highlighted as a point of ambiguity. And so the question is, how would a court look at it and how would they interpret it? The state has a resource called the property rights ombudsman, and cities or developers or landowners can go to the ombudsman and ask for advice or guidance. And they try to predict how the courts would read things in light of the statute, and they offered some advice on this. I think most people are familiar with the topic, but a quick 30-second overview is that your code indicates that a 24-hour use has to be away, quote, "away from residential uses." And then if you look at your zoning maps, all of the commercial areas that allow for a hotel use happen to be zoning districts where the abutting zoning district is a residential use zoning district. And so the question is, how can you have an ordinance that says "away from" and a zoning map that in all circumstances places them next to each other? And what the state ombudsman's office said is that by their view, "away from" is not an enforceable standard. And so what I would recommend to the city council is that when you're looking at "away from," apply it in the way the conditional use allows you to, which is to say, if the reason for having it "away from" is to protect against privacy concerns, for example, people on balconies that would look into residential neighborhoods, how can you mitigate that? What standard can you put in? And I think you have something in the plan where on certain sides of the structure, you don't have balconies. You can do things like planting fences, lighting restrictions, that would minimize the effect on the adjacent residential zoning districts. And then you also can impose some kind of setback requirement that would create some distance between the hotel and that. And I think that would be an effort to respect the spirit of that "away from" criteria, even if what we understand from the ombudsman's office is that it's not an enforceable standard because it's not objective, it can't be measured, you don't know exactly what it means in all circumstances.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns from council before we open the public hearing?
Just a reminder that Scott does have a staff report.
Oh, sorry, Scott. Thanks. Oh, yeah, hold on. Do you want to read the letter first or go to your staff report? Okay, perfect.
Okay. So on the traffic considerations under the standards for review, the applicant has provided a traffic study. They included the entire development, what could happen maybe in the future. So there's lots of recommendations that come as part of the future as it grows. But as far as our recommendation is, we've asked them to widen Lambert Lane, the entire length of their property. The requirements on UDOT's road, UDOT will make those recommendations. That's... we don't make recommendations what they have, what they do, they decide. So as far as traffic's concerned, you know, we'll work with UDOT to make sure that any impact on the 32 will be taken care of, and we've asked them to continue to widen Lambert Lane for their property. As far as the utility capacities go, when we do our master plans for the water and sewer, we include not only residential uses, but we anticipate some commercial uses. So in our master plan, we've anticipated that we'd have some commercial uses in the future. So we've included that in our capacity designs of the water and sewer and all that. So then we're good with that. The emergency vehicle access, they've, the fire districts looked at this and they've signed off, said that they're okay with it. They asked for some fire hydrants. So that's part of our, it's part of the site plan, they had the fire hydrants that the fire district required. As far as my review of the site plan, we asked at the city council, or the planning commission, that they install curb gutter and sidewalk on the private road they'll be through there to provide pedestrian access and through the project. That, at the time when I wrote my staff report, they hadn't updated that yet. They did throw some drawings together and showed sidewalk on one side of the road, but our recommendation is still to have curb gutter and sidewalk on both sides of the road. The irrigation company has preliminarily approved their stormwater discharge into their ditches. We've got to kind of finalize that. They haven't, we haven't finalized the storm drain design yet, and I'll just say this right now, part of my recommendation tonight when we get to the site plan approval is that we table it until we get the final plans because we're still working through getting the plans finalized. The sewer, they're going to connect to the sewer in Lambert Lane and the water in Lambert Lane, and they're going to loop. When we did the Village East subdivision, we stubbed the water line to their north property line. They're going to connect to that so that we'll have a looped water system through Village and Lambert Lane and come through this, which benefits our water system by having loops rather than dead-end lines. Other than that, we've just got to work through some of the site plan stuff. We do need to work with, Summit County has asked that they're planning on the trail from Camas to Francis that I'm sure you're all aware of. from Camas to Francis that I'm sure you're all aware of. So we've asked them to include a 12 adhesion on their property so we can put the trail on the, the property side rather than out in the ride, the right of way, so.
Great. Anything else? Okay, Katie, you want to read that letter?
Yeah. All right, let me pull it up here. Sorry, because we're all a little tardy soon. Okay, here we go. We can follow on. Okay. Uh, this is, subject is evidence supporting compliance with Francis City Code 18.45.150. It is addressed to the members of the Francis City Council and the community. I am writing to present evidence regarding the average check-in time of guests at the Best Western Plus Hotel Valley He, Valley Hotel, Heber Valley Hotel, which I own and operate. This data demonstrates that my future hotel will fully comply with Francis City Code 1845.150 as guest check-in times along with strategic buffering do not create any adverse impact or violate the intent of the regulation. Though detailed record keep, through detailed record keeping and analysis, I have compiled check-in data covering all of my properties, properties arrivals during the month of November 2024. The findings indicate that the majority of guests typically check in between 3:00 PM and 8:00 PM with an average check-in time of approximately 5:53 PM. Less than 1% of my guests check in after midnight. I'm going to scroll down to where it shows this data. This pattern aligns with standard hotel operations and does not contribute to any excessive noise, traffic disruptions, or other concerns that Francis City Code aims to regulate. Based on this evidence, I respectfully affirm that my hotel operates within the parameters set forth by city regulations and does not pose any violation of Francis City Code 1845.150. I have attached supporting documentation including detailed records and summaries of check-in data for your review. If further clarification is needed, I would be happy to discuss this matter with the council. I would also affirm that the primary purpose of my hotel's existence is to provide a peaceful and quiet lodging experience, not late night, late night activities that require late night customers. Francis City Code does not prohibit 24/7 businesses, nor does it prohibit lodging facilities. Furthermore, I would like to bring attention to the fact that short-term rentals in Francis have been approved within residential neighborhoods, areas where transient guest activity is far more likely to impact local residents than at my hotel, which operates in a commercial setting. The approval of these rentals demonstrates a double standard enforcement. If short-term rental properties in residential areas are deemed acceptable despite their potential for irregular check-in times, increased vehicle traffic, and disturbances, then my hotel, where operations are structured, regulated, and professionally managed, should not be subject to undue scrutiny. It is important to note that Francis City Code 1845.150 is subjective in nature and does not explicitly prohibit the operation of a lodging establishment. The interpretation of this section should be applied consistently and fairly. Thank you, thank you for your time and consideration. I appreciate the council's commitment to fair and informed decision-making, and I look forward to the upcoming city council meeting. Signed, Kevin Henderson.
Thank you. Okay.
I believe the applicant has a presentation. I don't know when you want to put that in, but just keep that in mind, too.
Yep. I was just about to ask, the applicant is here, if they have anything they would like to add before we move forward? Go ahead.
Okay. Yep. Oh, man, it wants to be on the screen.
Welcome to the Francis Highlands Commerce Center, a vision designed to bring new opportunities, businesses, and services to Francis City. I'm Wes Harwood, and I'm the CEO of Harwood Development, and I want to take you on a journey through what we have planned for this incredible space. We understand that responsible development means working within the environmental and regulatory guidelines. That's why we've taken extensive steps to ensure full compliance with local and federal regulations. We have worked closely with the US Army Corps of Engineers and made sure that there's a comprehensive wetlands delineation process that has been completed and verified. And these areas are not federally jurisdictional, which basically means that we can develop responsibly while ensuring proper mitigation. Our goal is to enhance the local economy while preserving the character of Francis City. We're creating a thoughtfully planned development featuring a hotel, restaurants, retail spaces, and essential services to meet the needs of our growing community. This isn't just another commercial project, it's an investment in the quality of life, providing convenient access to businesses, dining, and retail while maintaining the beauty of the Camas Valley. One of our top priorities is strengthening the local economy. The Francis Highlands Project will create jobs, attract businesses, and increase local revenue to support public services and infrastructure. We are also focused on smart growth, ensuring that what we build aligns with the needs of Francis City while respecting the rural character of the Camas Valley. This project will provide much-needed services like grocery stores, banking options, and restaurants, reducing the need for residents to travel outside the Camas Valley. I'd like to take a moment and go over the Francis Highlands Site Plan. And here's the site plan, and you can see on the right-hand side by the red arrow, it shows that there is a total of 80 parking spaces. Code requires 70, so the site plan currently has 10 spaces more than code requires. And if you notice in the rear, there is actually truck and trailer parking. So there's a great ability for guests to get in and out. You also notice there's a great flow coming from Highway 32 to the back of the hotel, and there's ample parking all around the hotel. This is the landscape plan. I think what's important here is to note that on the back of the property, there is a large amount of buffering that's taking place. There's a raised berm, there's also an eight-foot fence, and there is very tightly densely planted evergreen trees on the rear. And then this final shot shows the overall site plan. Again, it shows there's great circulation coming in from Highway 32. There's also two exits out to Lambert Lane, and it shows that the entire site just has great flow and circulation overall. We understand that growth can bring concerns, and we take those concerns very seriously. It isn't just about development, it's about making sure that this project works for the community and not against it. We've engaged with residents through public meetings and individual conversations to hear their thoughts on traffic, environmental impact, and the character of our town. One major concern has been preserving Francis City's natural beauty and small-town feel, and we are fully committed to protecting what it takes to make this area special. To address these concerns, we have worked to ensure that Francis Highlands will integrate seamlessly into the surrounding environment. We've also incorporated architectural guidelines that maintain the charm and character of Francis City. One of the concerns that we've heard is traffic impact. We have been working very closely with city planners and engineers to ensure that our designs support smooth traffic flow, walkability, and safe access for both vehicles and pedestrians. Another big concern we've heard is lighting. People do not want excessive light pollution that takes away from the natural beauty of the night sky. We completely agree. That's why we are implementing dark sky compliant lighting designed to minimize glare, reduce light pollution, and maintain the night sky's visibility. Our fixtures will be warm toned, downward facing, and strategically placed to provide safety without over-illuminating the area. Another major concern we've heard is about buffering, how we ensure a smooth transition between this project and surrounding homes and open spaces. To address this, we've designed significant green buffer zones incorporating landscaping, trees, and natural elements to provide a visual and sound barrier between the development and residential areas. This ensures that the Highlands Project blends rather than feeling intrusive. We know that architecture matters. We don't want this to feel like a massive out-of-place commercial project. We want something that fits into the character of Francis that we can all be proud of. We have designed the Highlands Project with a mountain-town aesthetic using natural materials, timbers, accents, and stone elements that complement the existing character of Francis. We're also creating a walkable, community-friendly environment, not a strip mall, but a well-planned space where people can gather, shop, and enjoy their town without losing the charm that makes Francis and the Camas Valley as a whole feel special. This isn't just about development, it's about doing it the right way. We're listening and adapting and working together to make sure this project serves Francis City while protecting its identity. It's a vision of what can be, where roots run deep, dreams take flight, and growth is measured not just in size, but in strength, spirit, and community. I'd like to take a moment and share the market study that was done for the Francis Highlands. In the introduction, they pointed out that the property should be operated as an upper-mid-scale hotel and be franchised with a central reservation system that is fully integrated with a recognized marketing platform. And basically what this means is because the hotel is franchised, it gives it a much higher probability that it will succeed. In the executive summary, it points out that this hotel will create between 12 and 18 full-time jobs for the valley, and it also creates over $20 million of economic impact over the first five years. And finally, in conclusion, it recommends that the property size should be between 70 and 90 rooms, which basically points out that there is only room for one hotel in the Camas Valley. We're here at the Best Western Plus in Heber City, Utah, meeting with our partner Kevin Henderson, and we're going to find out what his vision is for the Francis Highlands Hotel and have him share some of his experiences as a local, family-owned and operated business, which is focused on rural communities. Hey, I'm Kevin Henderson, welcome to our hotel. As Wes mentioned, this is a family-owned business. We've been in operation for seven years here in Heber Valley. This property is the result of 25 years of hospitality experience, primarily operating in rural communities like Heber Valley, Roosevelt, Vernal, Price, and soon-to-be Francis City, Utah. One of our favorite things about operating in rural communities is the ability to provide an awesome lodging experience that's not available in these smaller towns. We love that we have a great relationship with community leaders, community members, and that we're able to bring a valuable asset to these smaller communities like Heber and Francis. You know, something I don't think people realize when they see a Best Western Hotel is that all Best Western properties are locally owned and operated. So all of our hotels, we're, we're frequently in, we manage, we build them from the ground up, we design them, and there's a lot of thought and detail that goes into these properties that are specific for the communities that we operate in.
Hey, my name's Dave Deal, I'm the COO of Harwood Development. Behind us, you're looking at our Route 32 project. This is building eight going up right now. We're catching a lot of momentum, we're super excited about it. This project is going to be one of the newest additions to Francis City in the commercial sector. We have eight buildings in this project that are slated. We've got a mix of flex space, retail, and also restaurants going in here. Currently, we have three LOIs, which are letter of intents for local people that are wanting to bring their businesses. And we're going to be talking and interviewing one of those local companies that's in the manufacturing space, and this is really going to be a major value add to Francis City. Beyond the, the tax base that will come from this and be able to go towards the public uses, maintenance, and that kind of thing, the tax base is huge for Francis City. There's not a lot of commercial buildings here now, and so this is going to be a great project for the city. We're super excited about it. And for, as a resident and somebody that lives here, I'm also super excited for the type of businesses that are going to be in here that my family can come and support.
Hi, I'm McKinley Fitzgerald. I have a manufacturing company. You can see the pieces behind us, we've designed and fabricated for this structure here, and we're excited to be actually moving our operations here to Francis in part of this building that you see behind us. We focus on the production and manufacturing of light gauge steel, and we focus on affordable housing. We're excited about the opportunity to bring more jobs here to Francis, to support the local community, and use Francis as a hub for our manufacturing businesses to support the cities that surround.
Hi, this is Brendan with UMA Ventures. We're excited, talking about the new hotel coming to Camas and how it'll impact us. Right now, we're excited because people always ask us, like, where can we stay that's close to you? Well, now you can. You can stay five minutes from us, and next thing you know, you can be on top of the world or be on a stall build, seeing the winter landscape, zipping through a meadow, and we're excited.
We're here at the South Summit Fire District, talking with first responders who help keep the Camas Valley safe every day. As Francis continues to grow, supporting our police, fire, search and rescue, and emergency services is more important than ever. It's vitally important that projects like the Francis Highlands are planned with public safety in mind. We're not just adding businesses and jobs, we're making sure new development helps fund the services that keep our community safe. One major way that the Francis Highlands will help is through increased tax revenue, which provides critical funding for fire, EMS, and law enforcement. We also recognize the need for strategic planning, ensuring that new businesses and visitors don't create unnecessary strain on emergency response. To ensure emergency preparedness, the Francis Highlands is being designed with fire safety and first responders in mind, including well-planned access points, fire hydrant placement, and traffic flow to avoid congestion in an emergency. We're also building with modern fire-resistant materials and advanced safety codes, reducing risks and helping first responders do their jobs more efficiently. Public safety is a top priority, and we want to ensure that every step of this project benefits the first responders who protect us daily. We are grateful for the incredible work that the South Summit Fire District does, and we're committed to working hand-in-hand with them as Francis City grows.
I'm Scott Thorell, Chief Scott Thorell of South Summit Fire Protection District. We have just taken responsibility for our own EMS, and we are employing four full-time people each day who are dual-qualified in fire and EMS operations, and we still supplement from on-call personnel within the community to accomplish our mission. We can't put a fire out with four people, so we still rely heavily on the spirit of unity and the people's dedication to helping their fellow man through their service to South Summit Fire District. It's challenging, we have a gigantic area and a lot of serious calls and not a lot of resources.
These are our frontline apparatus for our new full-time employees. Frontline engine will have two people, and our main ambulance will have two people. New concept to us. This is our new tiller that we've gotten, 100-foot stick. We'll be able to provide elevated stream, fire calls, also expands our rescue abilities. This is a 3,000-gallon tender that we have, pride and joy pieces of the department. Being a rural fire department, we rely on these tenders to, to bring us water when there's no hydrants available.
This is more than just a development, it's a partnership with the people of Francis City. Your input matters, and we invite you to share your thoughts and ideas with us. We want this to be a project the whole community can be proud of. Our door is always open for questions, concerns, and ideas, because at the end of the day, we're building something together. Thank you for being a part of this journey, and we can't wait to bring this vision to
You guys, anything else, Dad?
My name's Josh Call, representing the development team. First of all, I'd like to say it's an honor to be able to stand here before you and to be to this point in our, in our project. We're grateful for the time and the dedication that's been put forward by staff and by you. We're thankful for the feedback that we've received from planning commission, from staff, from the residents. You know, every step of this has been, has been positive for us, and we've been able to, you know, hear things and make changes and, and, you know, do our very best to, to mitigate the factors that, that the hotel presents. When I presented to you guys a few months ago, stood here and showed you a very rough concept plan, we were committed at that time to being open, to being transparent, and, and to listening. I think what you see in our presentation and our proposal, it, it, it reflects that. Immediately, we heard concerns about our hotel being too tall. We heard concerns about not having enough trees and not having enough buffering landscaping. We heard concerns about light. We heard all, all sorts of concerns that came in, and, and we, we immediately made changes. We reduced the height of our hotel, we added more trees, we reduced our light output, we're fully dark sky compliant, we offered to, to dim the lights at, at later in night. So all the things that, that we've heard from residents, we've heard from staff, we've heard from planning commission, we've, we've listened, and, and we've implemented those as we've moved forward with our plans. What we're presenting to you tonight is, is exactly that, we're asking for your vote, we're asking for a positive recommendation respectfully to approve our conditional use permit and to approve our condition, our, uh, commercial development plan. We see the tremendous benefits that this project unlocks for the city of Francis, not just the hotel, but potential future development. We've wanted to be clear from the beginning that the hotel is what we believe unlocks the, the entire site and brings the ability to have a grocery store, a gas station, restaurant, things of that nature. So we're very appreciative of, of every step to this point. We're grateful for the feedback that we've gotten from the residents, from everybody. We're grateful for the feedback that we've gotten from the residents, from everybody. We're here to answer any questions that may come up, and so don't hesitate. We're here at your disposal.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is John Rudd. I am counsel for Harwood here tonight. I had the opportunity to meet with planning previously and to work with those good people. Normally, some of the things I would say would be a little longer. I'm going to be very short tonight because Mr. Blakesley, who I work with in, in other matters, I represent a lot of developers. I work with a ton of cities, and I really enjoy it. There are some difficulties in doing so, but I've always found it to be very rewarding. Mr. Blakesley provided great counsel to this counsel of what to consider. I just wanted to add one thing, and I'm sure he'll direct you. I don't want to direct you, but would, would just love to provide some knowledge for the developer. Those mitigation factors that are to be recognized and to be considered by the counsel, those are governed by something that's really interesting. It's the reasonable person standard under the law. When you're interpreting all statutes, codes, ordinances, the plain letter of the law of the writing is, is how it's determined and how you are required to take in the information and make your determinations. But there's this overriding principle of reasonability that is under the law, and that, that reasonable person standard applies here. It is reasonable to believe that a commercial zone would eventually be developed for commercial purposes. It is also reasonable that people that may live behind that commercial zone, that they would have to work with the city and developers to try and mitigate the effects of, of commercial zone development, even my cousins who live right behind here. I know quite a few people here. In fact, I have hired people in the city to work for me in my place of business, where I come from and where I live. I recognize some of them here today. But I just wanted to, to provide that understanding to the council. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. We would hope that if there are any conditional matters that, that would be presented, that we would receive approval and subject to those conditional matters. If the council would like something, if the engineer would like something to take place, approval to take place congruent with that, and if anything is conditional with that approval, we would welcome that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns from the council? Okay. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
May I ask if the people that are directly behind it be dumb first, allowed to speak first, the ones that are completely affected by it specifically? Like you have in past meetings?
Well, I've never done that in the past meeting, so. So, no, it'll just be first come, first served. Everyone gets their chance. We're not going to cut it short. Everyone will get hurt. Please keep your comments to two minutes, and go ahead.
Thank you, Count.
Sorry, let me interrupt you. When you do come to the lectern, please state your name for the record.
You got it. Byron Ames, live in Wild Willow. I love the civic engagement here. I love the public engagement. I wish this was the same level of engagement we got for Planning Frontier Days, which ironically is a celebration of the rural lifestyle and rural living that many are here to advocate for today. But I just want to make a quick comment about personal property rights, individual property rights. When I was mayor, people often asked me if I was pro-development or anti-development, and my answer was always neither. I'm pro-individual property rights. Since the Rhodes family moved into Camas Valley a long time ago, or when they first moved here, they only had to worry about themselves, their families, and occasionally some trappers, traders, and some Indians coming through the area. And individual property rights were not a big deal. And then the Lambert family showed up. And from that moment forward, in the Camas Valley, individual property rights has been an issue. People had to suddenly look across the property line at a neighbor, and they had to decide, what am I doing? How's it affecting my neighbor? Or the other way, saying, what is my neighbor doing is how is it affecting me? So this being a conflict of neighboring properties is not something that's new to Camas. It's been here since the beginning. So with the individual property rights that these two property owners, in the beginning, the Lamberts and the Rhodes had, it's no different than the conflict of property rights that we have now with the commercial landowner and neighboring residential landowners. The fact that this is now a conflict shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. When all of the homeowners bought those houses, they knew or should have known there was commercial zoning right next to them, so this isn't a surprise. But the way you deal with that conflict is to come up with some sort of compromise and figure out how, instead of drawing swords and going at each other, how you figure out this problem. And fortunately for all of us, and this is to you council members, who I have great empathy for your positions and what you have to do, and, and respect that. But the compromise process under the law and under this process here with the city council is the conditional use permit. That's how you figure out to resolve the conflict between the neighboring owners. So I just want to encourage you today, while you're considering comments, you're considering the applicant's, you know, materials, considering the comments from the council for the city, for the legal council, and I count at least three lawyers in this room, myself included, and we can all agree that's too many. But take your job in considering these conditional use issues very, very seriously, because those are the tools that you have to help resolve this conflict between individual property rights. If we just take away property rights, you're all going to head to litigation, and the only people who pay for that is the residents. That's it. So taking away property rights is not the answer. Mitigating damages with conditional use permits and proper application of those, that's a heavy burden on you guys. So I wish you, you know, all kinds of intelligence in your process today, but, and I'm rooting for you guys to get this right, but that's the process. So please put a lot of effort on the conditions as you're thinking about that and mitigating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian DeVore, 1102 Village Drive. I'm going to go pretty quick here, since I do only have two minutes. Tonight, you're going to hear a lot of different opinions and points. You probably already have. I would urge this council to really listen very closely, particularly, particularly to a few key things. Number one, we propose there is an objective interpretation of our city ordinance 1845-150. You'll, you will hear more about that coming. Number two, discussing property values real quick. Widely known that crime reduces property values. They, you know, that kind of goes without saying. Happy to provide a slew of reports on that. The applicant has provided letters with subjective opinions to argue that hotels do not increase crime. However, hard objective data tells a different story. Ton of data on this again. Some of that, I think, was shared via email to you all. I'll point to one report specifically, just to bring it up, by the Terrorism Transnational Crime and Corruption Center, which notes that in 80% of all sex trafficking, 80% of all sex trafficking victims were exploited at hotels or motels. Within that, 85% of sex trafficking occurred in the very same types of hotels that are being proposed, with the top associated brands being La Quinta, Days Inn, Best Western, and Howard Johnson. Sex trafficking and prostitution. Is that what we want in our community? Number three, our own city code does not allow for late-night facilities, facilities, which includes more than just buildings, to be near residential properties and should be denied on this alone. Again, you'll hear more. Lastly, I'd like to bring up Utah State Law, Chapter 7, Section 63G, 7201, that states, "Each governmental entity and each employee of a governmental entity are immune from suit for any injury that results from the exercise of a governmental function." This city and its employees cannot be sued for upholding our code. In fact, it's quite the opposite. So I know my two minutes is almost up. I'll leave you all with this. These indisputable objective facts that I'm referring to here, put together by your neighbors, guys, all of us. We understand the potential pass forward. We're ready for them. Okay? You're our elected representatives. We want to stand by you, but you have to stand by us, too. Okay? Tonight, this permit.
Thank you.
Amy Henderson, 110 Lambert Lane. City Council, we, a growing group of highly concerned citizens of Francis, reiterate our, our opposition to the development of a large-scale hotel applied for by Harwood Development. It is clear, with proper information at hand, that this hotel proposition violates city code. Because it violates city code, it must be denied. We believe that any hesitancy to deny this application is based on lack of information and context regarding proper interpretation of city code 1845-150, referring to buffers, fences, and walls. This code section has been shared to your attention before. It states, "Facilities that require late-night customers and activities shall be located away from residential areas to reasonably prevent disruption of privacy." City Code 1845-150. To properly understand the code, we need to understand what the various words in the code mean. In a court, a code is assumed to be very deliberate, each word chosen for its particular meaning. Critically, Utah courts read the plain language of the statute as a whole and interpret it its provisions in harmony with other statutes in the same chapter. Reference Selman versus Box Elder County, a 2011 Utah case. In addition, a local government's interpretation of its own ordinances is allowed some level of non-biding difference by the court. Reference Fox versus Park City, a 2008 Utah case. For example, facilities and away have meanings that can change the interpretation and enforcement of the code. I would like to go over the code and demonstrate the critical meanings and context of our city and our code. Thank you.
My name's Rex Larson. I'm at 1009 Village Drive. I'm going to continue where Amy left off. So what is the definition of a facility in our code? Is it only buildings? Does it count auxiliary buildings? Does it include parking lots? We all argue that facility refers to the building, the hotel. However, facilities include more than just the building. It also refers to the parking lot. Francis City Code itself tells us that a parking lot is a facility, specifically a parking facility. Francis City Code 18170, in the mixed or combined parking section, says, uses the terms parking areas, parking spaces, parking facilities, and just plain facilities in context to referring to parking. In that code, you will see parking, parking uses, parking spaces, parking facilities, and facilities are used interchangeably. We are not discussing mixed parking here tonight. However, as every word is assumed to have been deliberate, it is clear that this code intends us to understand that parking at a business is a part of that facility, or even a facility of its own. The word facility in the code may include even more, but Francis City Code is clear, parking lots are a facility, not just the hotel itself. Additionally, Utah Administrative Code R392-5023, under the definition section, has a definition for public lodging facilities. Under Section C, it states that, "Included in the public lodging facilities are the premises upon which the facility is located, together with parking lots, recreational facilities on the grounds, and so on." Utah State Code also recognizes that parking lots, specifically hotel parking lots, are part of that, of the facility. Indeed, this definition goes on to include the premises as well, meaning that all, all of the property upon which the business is located. I want to repeat that again. All of the property upon which the business is located is considered a facility of that hotel under the Public Lodging Facilities Utah Administrative Code. And I will, that, that's all. Thank you.
Holly Firth, 939 Village Drive, and I'm going to continue where Rex left off. Referring back to the code 1845-150, it states, "Facilities that require late-night customers and activities shall be located away from residential areas to reasonably prevent disruption of privacy." We can reasonably agree that a 24-hour hotel is late-night and has both customers and activities, which will be present and occurring at all hours of the night. These customers will be using all of the hotel facilities, including the parking lot. Customers arrive, depart, smoke, yell, and fight in hotel parking lots through all hours of the night. One of the very roots of need for additional protection of privacy from a late-night business, concerning shall. In the context of a city code, the choice of the word shall means whatever shall is attached to is absolutely mandatory. By using shall, the drafters of this code are stating that to go against this code is not allowed, and therefore, going against this code is breaking the code and therefore the law. Referring to residential areas, we must interpret that code, knowing this exact wording was deliberate. This code does not say house, home, or dwelling unit. It specifies the area, not constructed improvements made within the area. The narrowest interpretation of this phrase that still has meaning is residential zoned parcels of land. Any narrow, any narrower interpretation requires us to place residentially zoned properties outside of the residential area, which goes against the plain language of the code and all common sense. A broader interpretation may mean that even encroaching on residential zoning is sufficient, but this is a larger interpretation than the code may be capable of supporting. So we keep our understanding of residential areas to mean property zoned as residential. The remainder of the code states, "To reasonably prevent disruption of privacy." This is a statement of legislative purpose, as described in Price versus Orem, a 2000 Utah case. In that case, the Utah Supreme Court found that these statements are nothing more than a statement of policy which confers no substantive rights. Effectively, it describes that policy statements are advisory regarding how the code was to be interpreted, but not limiting or granting any rights itself. It merely provides a reference for why an interpretation matters. For our purposes, we will focus on the first half of the code we are discussing. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robin Ross, 930 Village Drive. I know this is a huge amount of information, so let me, allow me to summarize so far. Facility includes both hotel and parking lot and all premises of the business. Residential area includes all residentially zoned properties. Shall, mandatory actions must be taken. Reviewing these in context of the code, the code is interpreted to say, "The hotel and its attached parking lot and property that require late-night customers and activities must be located away from residentially zoned properties." And so we are left with one last question. What is the meaning of away? In plain language, we all know that away cannot be understood to be meant against, touching, near. All these words are the opposite of any reasonable understanding of the word away. And while it has been stated that Ludma 109A 50951 requires a code to be objective, that is not exactly what Ludma states. In Section 5095 of Ludma, it repeatedly states that "Applications for land use must be reviewed with respect to objective ordinance-based criteria." It does not state that every code must contain an objective element. The intent of Ludma is to create fair and consistent application of city codes. This code can be understood by referencing other aspects of our code to properly understand the meaning of away. As mentioned above in the Selman case, courts view the code selection in harmony with each other. What is too close? In one part of the code, should be understood to be too close, is another part of the code. By reviewing these codes, codes in harmony, we again have an objective understanding of away, which is entirely ordinance-based. The residential properties upon which the facility intrudes are zoned RH. This RH zoning requires even when back-to-back with other RH parcels, a minimum setback of 25 feet along the back property line. That means there is a minimum, on our basic rule, is that two houses cannot be closer than 50 feet from each other in this zone. But here, we are not talking about our homes. We are not talking about the minimum distance we need for normal level of privacy from our neighbors. We are talking about residential areas and facilities. We are talking about our backyards and an entirely transit pop- and an entirely transit population. This default rule means that without codifying any extra protections, 50 feet of distance between ordinance, regulations, units is bare minimum acceptable in this area. Thank you.
James DeGray, 1744 McNeil Circle. In conclusion, the drafting of our code seeks to increase the level of protection and distance from late-night businesses over and above the distances that was already codified. Because it was chosen to provide an extra layer of protection, it is clear that "away" must mean a distance greater than 50 feet. Because we chose to use the word "facility," not "building," it is clear that a 24-hour parking lot is considered to be equal in both consideration and concern to a 24-hour business. Because we chose to use residential area, not dwelling unit, it is clear that the distance the code is concerned about is not the distance to the home itself. It is the distance to the property. Our own code, in other sections, recognizes the right to use and enjoy our property. No mention is made of enjoying only our homes. Combining all of this together, it is clear that the intent of the city code is to require late-night businesses and their parking facilities to be located at real distances from residential areas. When we add this last definition into the code, a fully interpreted and understood code would read, "The hotel and its attached parking lots and property that require these late-night customers and activities must, without other option, be located at a distance substantially greater than 50 feet from residentially zoned properties." To interpret the code as anything else is to say that even under the special protection of 1845-150, a 24-hour facility can be closer to a residential area than two residences can be to each other under standard zoning. As the intent of 1845-150 is clearly not to allow this ridiculous outcome, the only available option is to vote no to this proposal. Any other vote is not only irresponsible, it is in total violation of the plain and objective meaning of our city code.
Lisa Kajawi, 2337 Spring Hollow Road. I'm speaking on behalf of the people that I'm following, Lambert Lane residents and beyond. Conditional use permits require mitigation of reasonably anticipated detrimental effects, which is what we're all talking about today. Legal obligation to deny the permit due to crime risks. Under Francis City Code and Utah State Law, Utah Code 10-9A-507, conditional use permit must be denied if the anticipated detrimental effects, such as crime, cannot be substantially mitigated by the applicant or through reasonable conditions. Law enforcement data from comparable rural hotels demonstrate that crime, including drug activity, domestic disputes, and prostitution, not to leave out sex trafficking, is a persistent issue that cannot be effectively mitigated. Many emails have been sent, by myself included, of evidence, critical studies that support with hard data. Crime at similar rural hotels demonstrates inevitable issues. Data from the Best Western in Duchene, Utah, a rural hotel managed by Henderson 500 with the same operator, similar in scale and setting to what's proposed here for us in Francis. They show repeated calls for law enforcement related to disorderly conduct, drug use, domestic disputes, and prostitution. These incidents were reported by hotel staff themselves, acknowledging their inability to control criminal activity on their property. If trained hotel managers cannot prevent these issues, then neither can Francis City due to our lack of law enforcement response and emergency response. Further, I would add, it is not the staff's responsibility at any hotel when a crime is committed. It's law enforcement's responsibility, even with video equipment. I do have a letter that was sent on behalf of the, I believe it's Sergeant Kelly Maines, at the SureStay Plus Hotel by Best Western in Price, Utah. And she was sending a letter to Francis, included in your staff report or packet, or somewhere, I think it's in the packet, touting the upgrade to the video surveillance system, which is wonderful, that would be great. However, she goes on to mention that our department, sorry. I'll just read the whole sentence. "The recent upgrades to the security system, specifically the upgrades to the video surveillance system, have proven extremely helpful in multiple investigations and have assisted us solving multiple cases." That's evidence right there of multiple crimes being committed in Price at a comparable hotel. Further, in the plan, Henderson, actually it's Hardwood mentions, based on Henderson's behalf, that there's no crime. You know, in their hotels, it's very well established, and it's usually handled within themselves. And that's further that these type of things that are not only local and in Utah, and one of the emails has at least 10 incidents of crime, many of them violent and sexual in nature. Those are all in the emails. One of them is in Vernal, which is a comparable hotel. However, it just, we believe these can't be mitigated by what has been proposed. Francis lacks the law enforcement resources to contain hotel crime. Francis City does not have its own police force and relies on the Summit County Sheriff's Department, which is already stretched thin. The closest sheriff's office is in Park City, leading to delayed response times. And additionally, the city has no agreement requiring the developer to fund additional policing, placing an undue burden on local taxpayers. All these, there are other detrimental effects other than crime, but crime is really concerning. Any stress on our power and our water, that leads to increase in taxes, and all these things lead to a decrease in property value, which is also very concerning, because then you end up with increased taxes having to boost up infrastructure. We already have issues with our power and water. We all get shut-offs in the summer. I don't, you know, I haven't seen any reports of adequate mitigation on those facts as well. Moral obligation to protect public safety. The city of Francis has a responsibility to preserve the safety, rural character, and financial stability of its residents. Proving this hotel would introduce crime. Not only all the evidence there, but also with huge reports, the lower property values and create long-term negative impacts. I do want to mention four things in response to some of your mitigation. One is the 24/7 with the data for check-in and checkout times. Thank you for providing that. I know you all work very hard, and we all obviously care very much.
Ma'am, I don't want to cut you off, but there are a whole bunch of other people.
Okay.
And this is a two-minute time limit.
Perfect, and I'll pass off. The check-in and checkout times are insufficient because, and thank you. Beyond when people check in, they can do whatever they want after that. That's really a moot point. Once people check in, that's great to have that data. However, they can come and go as they wish at any hour. The other thing is the noise abatement that doesn't take into account amplified music, patio, outdoor discussions, and groups more than two. The noise, two people talking, in my opinion, not sufficient. Also seasonal, and I have two more quick points, and then I'll step away. Seasonal, anyone knows that lives here long enough that Park City and Heber Hotels, if though that data for full-time employment, that really is also kind of insufficient because our hotels are highly seasonal. It's not steady. I personally have firsthand experience with that, where your schedule shifts and changes. It's not a full-time guarantee. It's highly seasonal. And the fourth thing is fire. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Justin Jones, 1185 Village Drive. Leaving off on moral obligations to protect public safety, the city of Francis has a responsibility to preserve the safety, rural character, and financial stability of its residents. Approving this hotel would introduce crime, lower property values, and create long-term negative impacts that cannot be undone. Given these legal, practical, and ethical concerns, we urge the city council to deny this conditional use permit. Approving this project would both legally and defensively in disservice to the citizens of Francis. Sincerely, residents of Lambert Lane, Lambert Lane and friends. I got left short on that one. That's the end of that. But I'm a native here. I'm going to go against kind of what the state attorney said here as far as feelings and all that. But, you know, one way or another, we know that commercial development's going to happen on that property. We understand that as residents there. But a hotel is not the place for it. It's not, it's too close. You're invading our privacy. We've got a nine-month-old daughter. I don't have a lot of fears, a lot of scares. But people to be up on two or three stories and look in my window, that's no longer home for me. Like I said, I've lived here. I've ranched here. I've grew up here. I've done everything here. We need that privacy. You guys can be the John Duttons of this town and save us, or we can fight you as the Beth Dutton. Work with us, and thank you, guys.
My name is Audra DeVor, and I live at 1102 Village Drive. I don't have anybody else, but I need a deep breath right about now. And I can assure you that many of us in this room do. I'm going to share a perspective based on what I have observed in the last two to three weeks since this proposal was reissued to city planning. We have watched this city, as the city has been pressured, held hostage by a developer threatening legal action if their conditional use permit isn't approved, although the city hasn't even finished its diligence yet. If I don't, if that isn't unfair pressure, I don't know what is. This became painfully clear in the February 17th planning meeting. We watched in disbelief as the city planner and engineer claimed that there was now a state law that overrode our city code. End of discussion. When council or planning committee members pushed for clarification, surely that would lead to further debate, right? Shockingly, no. The city planner simply read the report and didn't really engage in any further dialogue or questions asked about our code and how it applied with this new information. So the citizens decided, if our city officials won't put in the due diligence that a project of this scale demands, we will. Because if this city government rolls over at every lawsuit threat, you are doomed to, dooming this town's future. Thankfully, this small town is full of brilliant minds, legal experts, construction professionals, strategists, and researchers who've stepped up to do what should have been done before waving the white flag. The result? A well-researched, legally-backed case proving this project as proposed should be denied. Here's why. This development does not meet city code, and we've provided legal definitions to prove it. Crime data shows increased risk, including human trafficking, and we have reports to demonstrate that. There has been nothing done to address or mitigate the crime at all. This developer cannot control who stays at their hotel, and we do not have the emergency services to handle the consequences. The neighborhood is already experiencing, my neighbors, raise your hand if you have flood or crawl space right now because of the infill that's happened. There are already impacts to our neighborhood and our homes and our property as a result of the development that's already started. And spring runoff hasn't even peaked yet. This is what, this is just what we have the data on so far to present to you today. We are committed to uncovering every remaining concern we have. We will not back down, the way city planning did. And this town can grow in a healthy, responsible way. We are not anti-development. We are, and we do not have to become Heber City. My heart drops when those pictures pull up in their video of like, this is what you're going to look like. Is that what we want to look like? This decision will permanently change our valley. At the very least, it must be tabled for further review. But in reality, you have every legal right and obligation to deny this project and protect the safety, privacy, and property rights of this community's citizens. Thank you.
Jeff Faulkner, 915 Village Drive. That's a tough act to follow, but I will try. Normally, I wing it, but I'm going to read a statement I wrote. "I'm a proud member of this community and consider the members of the city council, my friends and some of my dearest friends. My family's been in this valley since 1857, and though it took me 160 years to get back here, it's something that's very near and dear to me. And I'm very impressed by the work done by my friends and neighbors. To former Mayor Ames' point, we did know it was commercial when we moved in, and that was acceptable, but a hotel was not part of that allowed use, and never did we think that our privacy would be invaded as such. I've obtained police reports through Graham requests for both Duchene and Colville law enforcement agencies, and they detail significant crime issues at the hotels and their communities that are very similar to our size and makeup. And one of those reports is a property that the applicant owns, and I can appreciate that the team of Henderson 500 and Hardwood feel there's no crime, but that just isn't the facts. I've emailed you all letters with facts, with police reports, dates, all the details. Also, they have zero control over their guests other than calling the police, which records indicate they do. We also did call the Best Western Heber, and per their check-in policy, they allow check-ins up to 2:00 a.m. So whether people check in there or not, it still is a policy and poses a safety factor of putting people on my fence line and other adjacent residences' fence line. These are not speculative. They're documented incidences of loitering, intoxication, and even prostitution on those premises. And those activities will be happening in residential neighborhoods based on the location of this proposed hotel site. Those incidences alone were mentioned, were just of the Henderson 500 property that they own and operate. I don't know about you guys, but having my children witness prostitution or even solicitation from what should be the safety of their own home isn't my idea of mitigation or living in a safe rural wholesome town. One of the complaints was prostitution, and it was soliciting in the parking lot, and that was reported by their manager as an increased concern. And with no formal agreements for our public safety plan for the city, that leaves us to fend for ourselves. I've brought this up multiple times, but I submitted a Graham request to the city and been informed that we do not have formal agreements or a plan for safety. With that, increased crime, property values will go down. That's just a fact. These issues are not avoidable. They're not avoidable with growth, but intentionally allowing them to be in a residential neighborhood seems negligent. I also want to reiterate that the city does have legal standing and an obligation to its current code and the residents to deny this conditional use permit. The public clamor cited in the staff report and the attorney's statement, none of this is clamor. This is all facts documented. It's not, it's just facts that have been presented. And if the city does have ambiguous definitions in their code, the residents shouldn't suffer that result. If the city wants to change their code to make objective standards to comply with state law, then they need to deny this application and have them resubmit when the code is changed or allow the courts to decide the outcome of the decision tonight. Thank you.
Jim Matthews on Ash Court again. I don't envy your position at all. I feel bad that you guys have to do this. I just hope you do a good job. One thing they mentioned a couple people ago was about the spring runoff. One thing that is going on, and I'm assuming, yeah, you're the city engineer, because you talked about your stormwater and that kind of thing, a little bit about what you're going to do. What I would suggest, if and somehow in your infinite wisdom you decide to approve this project, you at least go through and figure out a way to mitigate the water that has got to be pouring down these poor people's throats. Because all of this water is designed to go in canals, which is all silting up the canals, which all runs behind my house and everybody else's house, not to mention these people's backyard. And under normal circumstances in a project, you would take the project, which is the hotel site, and you would mitigate that site for construction. You would get your stormwater prevention permit, which doesn't appear to be there. You would have all of that stuff mitigated. This particular project, I would suggest you mitigate all the way to the border, since they've already taken and destroyed the whole freaking place, and all that topsoil is now running around on everybody's backyard and in the streams. And that particular law trumps every bit of this. The state stormwater prevention program, and you're very aware of that. That particular thing trumps all of this. So it needs to be dealt with. Then on another completely different side note that I forgot to talk about when I brought up, talked about this earlier. I don't know if you guys record your planning commission sessions. I assume you do. I would respectfully ask that you personally review that. I was appalled, and you would be embarrassed at the way those young ladies were treated. There is no reason Justin should sit there and scream at a young lady next to him and said, "I don't care what you think." Absolutely unprofessional. Should be, makes you guys look unprofessional, even though I know that's not you. But I would respectfully ask that you review that yourself. Thank you.
Kimberly Lawson, Struisway. I'm just gonna throw out some facts, too. KPCW published two articles in the month of February that Summit County is one of the few counties in the state that's losing residences. We lost, three years in a row, we've lost residences. Last year, we lost 450. The South Summit School District reported that enrollment is down 61 students for the 24-25 school year. So I'm thinking the jobs that they're creating are gonna be for Heber, and that's where they're just gonna have to come from, unless we can get more affordable housing in the valley. And then I contacted the Maverick Gas Company because Mr. Harwood and Mr. Henderson were very gracious in allowing me to come and just talk to them about their development. And I was concerned about the gas station that he's planning on building, and even possible the grocery store, because Maverick announced that they're gonna put a Maverick on Highway 40, east of Highway 40, on 248, and their business plan right now is to have that up and running by spring of next year. They're gonna try and put it in this fall, but they are definitely gonna have it up by next year. And I just see that growth in Robertson Flats might be coming if the Maverick is successful there. I can see maybe a Harmon's going into Robertson Flat. I heard that several years ago when I was moving in here. And then I'm really worried about what that's gonna do to the retail traffic in our valley. We already have three gas stations within a half a mile of each other, and with that Maverick going in, I'm just really worried about those right now. Trying to make sure I've covered everything. I just wanna say, a reasonable person wouldn't build a hotel next to a residential area. I mean, they're not afraid of the commercial. They just don't want a hotel. Thank you.
Steve Fitzgerald, 338 West Hilltop Road. I'm gonna give some of you a break. I am in favor of this. I've lived here a long time. Where'd all of these people come? It was a pleasant valley. Our taxes were low. Our water didn't cost much, all that. You guys are upset. You're gonna get your toes stepped on a little bit. You've stepped all over us. So I don't have any sympathy for you. But I would, I'd like you to do this, but I want you to meet the codes. Whatever they are. Three stories, that's it. No change in code. I think you should do something like this gentleman says about the water over there. And I've had a little discrepancy with you guys. Boy, that's a good time for a phone call.
Man, I guess.
Betsy telling you to shut up.
No, not Betsy. Probably. I don't even know how to shut it off, to be honest with you.
You're all right.
You're good.
Just go on. We don't care.
But when you do your conditional use permit, I would like for you to put your spot in it and do the best you can. I have no, no reason that you wouldn't. But when you do that, enforce it. I've had some difficulties with you guys about codes, and I have several that I've took to attorney. They, they're not enforced, and you guys don't enforce them. So if you're gonna do this, forget about this written complaint and enforce the code. Whatever you put out, enforce it. And then everything will be fine. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Corby DeGray, 1744 South McNeil Circle. Just wanted to bring up that we have been in contact with Scott Simpson with the water company. How can we, how can you approve this conditional use permit when they do not have a water drainage plan in place at all? We need to be demanding water shares before people get a conditional use permit. The things we have learned about Francis and water shares is ridiculous. As their video kind of showed, fire department, we have four full-time employees. That is not enough to put a fire out, as I understand. We need at least six. So we rely heavily on volunteers for that. And I don't know if a lot of people know, our emergency staff and whatnot go basically from P.O.A. to Woodland. That is a huge area to cover. And police department, I mean, we probably have at least a 30-minute call time from when you call to when they get to you, so thank you.
Porter Spencer, Oak Lane. I sent all of you an email, but I'd like to provide an additional comment. I'm on an email chain with some of these lovely, smart people. They are not done fighting, let me tell you. Katie mentioned parking lot noise earlier. One thing I wanted to bring up is the dumpsters are right on the back property line. I've had conversations with Republic Services before, very nice rep over there. She told me they can start collecting trash as early as 4:00 a.m. commercially, especially the recycling, because they come up from Salt Lake to do that. They have had many complaints from Park City High School. The residents that are backing Park City High School, because the dumpsters get picked up at 4:00 o'clock in the morning. A quick Google search points that dumpsters, emptying dumpsters can produce up to 100 decibels of noise, and there are not sufficient noise mitigation measures in place to mitigate the noise that the garbage trucks are gonna make when they pick up the dumpsters that are right next to these people's property lines. So I believe it should be denied.
Sorry, what? Yep, go ahead.
Can I ask all of you guys that had that handwritten out, went one after the other, could I get a copy of that? It would make the minutes so much easier.
Copy and paste.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, council members, I request that you deny the conditional use permit because this project exposes the city and its residents to major physical, legal, and financial risks. Utah Title 63G Chapter 7 provides government immunity, protecting cities from liability when making land use decisions, as long as they're based on legal cause. I'm gonna give you three legal causes that you can use to protect yourself. Francis City Code 1845-150 states facilities that require late-night customers and activities shall be located away from residential areas. While staff reports suggest the nearest home is 300 feet from the hotel, the measurement excludes the project's facilities and parking lots. Where are the mitigation factors that are going to prevent noise disturbances on the parking lot facilities that are directly next to homes? The applicant has also provided data on check-ins, but they have no data for checkouts or general guest activities. So they gave us a 30-minute snapshot of when a guest comes, right? That should take 30 minutes of a 24 hours, and no other data. Again, there is your legal protection to vote no. Utah Law Code 109507 says if the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects, reasonably would be crime, noise, disturbances, mental health, lack of privacy, if all of those, so if the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of a proposed conditional use cannot be substantially mitigated by the proposal, the conditional use may be denied. So for the sake of this, because of time, I'm only going to bring up crime. Hotels and motels have the highest rates of violent crime. Violent crime, not petty crime, violent crime. This is what we're allowing into our community. There is clear evidence that hotels, including those owned by the applicant, we pulled data from hotels owned by the applicant have a documented history of crime, law enforcement calls, and public safety concerns. Police records, and I'm happy to give these to you. I've already sent them to you, but I heard that there was some issues getting our emails, which is weird. So I will, I will give you the exact facts and figures, but there are police reports. This is not public opinion. These are police data and reports. There are domestic disputes requiring police intervention, disorderly conduct, and assault on officers. Officers that we don't have. Drug activity, prostitution, all concerns reported by hotel staff that are owned by the applicant. Additionally, the applicant has submitted letters stating that security cameras have assisted in solving crimes. Council members, solving crimes? They're supposed to mitigate them. Solving them, that means that they've already happened. Again, this is your third legal cause that you can deny this, and you won't be, and you are preventing a lawsuit. That's the third one. If the city approves the project despite overwhelming evidence of unmeasurable crime, it will expose itself to legal liability, that we're all gonna have to pay for, by the way. Utah Law protects you if you deny the permit based on valid legal cause. I gave you three reasons. We have emailed so many more. We have a responsibility to preserve Francis City, protect homeowners, and ensure public safety. This project opposes those principles. I know that the city is worried about exposure to liability, and I've talked to city council members saying, "But Lindsay, we have an applicant that has spent money. They did that preemptively before they got the conditional use permit applied." So that is on them. Yes, if the hotel is denied, they may lose some money, but again, that was their prerogative to take and spend money before they had this approved. But it is nothing compared to the permanent harm to Francis residents and the onslaught of lawsuits that are coming. I urge you to protect our citizens, our community, and obey the law, and protect all of us from a massive onslaught of lawsuits that are heading our way. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
I just have one quick alibi. The mayor had talked about your concern that people were on a fixed income and they were having trouble paying their taxes. I am personally volunteering to raise money for anybody in the county that needs help paying their taxes. And I can assure you, with the town that we live in, we would like to help our fellow neighbors. If they're in financial need, we will, we will go to their need and help them, and I don't even need to know who it is. Just let Summit County know. I'm bringing in a certain dollar amount, and we'll make it happen, and that, that's all I have. Thanks.
Any other public comment?
A quick one to that point. A quick one to that point. Everything that's been proposed, ironically, for the people that are concerned about their taxes, which is very valid, especially on a fixed income, all these things that we're proposing, they actually will increase our taxes.
Thank you.
Not that we're proposing, but that the hotel would.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Thank you for hearing us out.
Yeah, of course. All right. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Any I hope, questions, concerns, comments? Yeah. Quick, two-minute recess?
Yeah, I'll ask a question, but I want to go ask him.
Yeah, two-minute recess.
You wanna complain about your mail? You want your old mail lady back? Wish you missed a little or something. She just calls me. I don't have to get it a week later.
Right. She tells me when my kids are already something delivered to other places.
Exactly. You don't know that now. Too bad they're all just about grown. River's not. How old's River? High school? Oh, I forgot. He's Paisley's age. I do remember that, yeah.
Twins are gone, aren't you?
Yeah, that's sad. It's not what it is.
Oh, it's totally sad.
Yeah.
They text about once a day to ask for gas money.
You know what? My dad used to tell me, oh, we're off. No, we're not. My dad used to say, no, I used to call.
Okay. We'll, we'll give you a second, but we'll try to get the meeting back to order and, and get going again. Need a gavel.
All right, get to order, get to order. How's that?
Fantastic.
You ought to take me out for the noise thing, we can talk.
Folks, folks, we'll go ahead and get started here in just one second. As soon as Suzanne's back in her seat, we'll continue the meeting. I appreciate you allowing us the couple minutes as a recess to give everyone a little bit of a break. Sorry, maybe I jumped the gun just a hair. I, I want Suzanne back here just so she can keep up with the minutes, otherwise we get behind and, we do have the recording, but.
Oh, here she is.
Here we go. All right. But before, we, we ended bringing it back to council, before we bring it back to council for comment and consideration, if the applicant has anything they'd like to add or answer any of the questions or concerns that have been brought up, we'll hear that and then we'll come to the council. And we may still have questions, but we'll at least start there.
I, I wanna be careful. Actually, this isn't public, I'm not bound by that, just so everyone knows. But, I just wanna make it clear, I, some of the, there probably were attorneys involved doing their best, and I, I applaud them, and, look, I, I can understand a lot of, of issues that have been brought up. I do wanna bring it back to the law, my role is the law. And I wanna empower the, the city council. I wanna be careful, Mr. Blakesley is the counsel, legal counsel for this body, for this council, and he knows what he is doing. But I did wanna just address a couple things. It's interesting, facility is not a defined term as we are using it here, but I do think it was interesting to, to try and use that i- in the vein that it's been used. Interestingly enough, though, hotel is defined in Francis City Code. And I wanna read to you the definition of hotel. It says hotel slash motel means a building containing sleeping rooms for the temporary occupancy of guests. Accessory facilities may include a lobby, meeting rooms, recreation facilities, group dining facilities, and other facilities or activities customarily associated with hotels or hotel apartments. Now, that's interesting. The reason why they don't state parking lots is because parking lots are not unique to hotels or any other structures. They are required for all commercial use. It's actually emboldened in the code in regards to parking requirements. But if, I would, I'll allow your counsel to direct you on the interpretation of being able to use a parking lot for commercial purposes to interpret conditional use permits. I'll let him direct you on that, but I will tell you, I've never heard of that argument before. Interestingly enough, I have heard of the argument regarding this council's requirement for conditional use permits. And mainly why I'm doing this, I believe the council understand, understands it, but I want everybody in the community to understand this. It's important, you have a very, very difficult job. I don't know, as an attorney, if I would wanna be on the council, but you donate your time, but the reality is you are required to take into factors, substantive factors, to make your determination of approvals. And those are on the screen here. You will notice that there are many things that were discussed that are not specifically outlined. And while I understand those things, I care about many of the things that are being referenced, whether it's in Francis, or it's in Bluffdale, or wherever else we all live. I care about many of those things too, but I wanna empower just the city in general to understand that, and redo the state law regarding conditional use permits. It's, it states, state law provides that a land use, use authority shall approve a conditional use if reasonable conditions are proposed. And notice the word reasonable. It's important that we understand that term. That is actually a legal term that your council will, will direct you to make decisions on, that again, is, is codified in law, in precedent and in code. And it states, reasonable conditions are proposed or can be imposed to mitigate the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use in accordance with, and here is something very important, applicable standards. There may be things outside of applicable standards that you want to take into consideration, but actually codified under the code in the state, you have to stick with your applicable standards. What are your applicable standards? We went through this with planning. We asked specific questions, is there any applicable standard that we can improve on that doesn't meet that, what is being requested? We would ask the same thing of, of this body. If there is an applicable standard that needs to be mitigated, we wanna document what that is. And then we wanna come before the body and make sure we meet that reasonable standard. But this council, mainly for the city residents, does not have the discretion if they don't like a specific use, if it is approved in the city, which it is, and, and we've already read where the city actually identifies hotels as something that they're gonna have to understand it's defined, and that it will be approved eventually. This body, this council, needs to stick within the code and the precedent of state law to make the determinations that it makes. It goes on to say that this does not give the city discretion to decide if it likes or wants the proposed use. State law dictates that the city must, and in the law, we say that's not permissive, that's required, it's mandatory. So the word must is, is referenced. Approve the conditional use if the anticipated detrimental effects could be lessened by proposed conditions. And again, I will just tell you, those detrimental effects, under the factors that you need to consider, are listed right there. And if there are concerns, we'll ask in a vote, what is the concern? When you guys discuss it, and then we'll have the opportunity to be able to document that. And that's for our benefit and your benefit. We wanna know what is, is driving the determination that you're making, and then what can we do to improve that determination? And I will just state, it does state that it just needs to be considered if they could be lessened. The conditions do not need to be eliminated. We'll never be able to eliminate bad actors, bad things that occur, crime in general, we're never gonna be able to do that. Luckily, we don't use that standard here because schools actually have the highest rate of police force being called. But those are important, those are necessities for our children and other people, whether it be colleges, high schools, middle schools. There are necessities as well for shelter, something that we're trying to meet for the city, for people to come and enjoy this place with the residents, provide some, a, a taxable base that can be used by the city for essential services. But in closing, it just says that they do not need to be eliminated, they just need to be reasonably lessened or mitigated. And we hope we have done that. If we haven't, we'd like to learn about it so we can do it better. And with that, I appreciate your opportu, the opportunity to talk to you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. We'll bring it back to council for questions, comments, concerns.
Well, I did have one.
Go ahead.
He addressed it. No, perfectly, but you deferred to our council.
Yes, yes. I'm trying not to direct.
Yeah, no, no, I'd, just like a little clarification on the parking lot as being a facility, is that something that needs to be factored in, or it is not?
It's a, it's a question, this whole, the comments about, I'll ask the people, please not respond.
Keep the comments in the audience at a minimum.
I'm gonna try to be fair to everybody's perspectives here, but I, I think the council deserves legal advice so you can consider this. Here's how I look at the code when I'm trying to understand a term that, that may not have a definition. And there've been two things raised related to 18.45.150. The first has been this language that says if there's a 24-hour facility, it should be located away from residential facilities. And then the other is a question of, or residential properties. The other thing that's been raised is what is the definition of facility, and does it include just the building itself or the broader property? So to the first question, I think it's really difficult to interpret this code as prohibiting hotels outright on commercial properties within the city. I don't find that argument easy to defend if the city were to base its rejection of the application on that section of code. And the reason I say that is the impossibility of rationalizing, why would you have hotels listed in your table of uses as a conditional use? And why would the only properties in the city that are zoned commercial also be abutting zones that are zoned residential? And so I find the more plausible reading of that section of the code is that, and if you look at the, let me read from the actual language, that section, 18.45.150, it doesn't relate to the land use right, it relates to buffers, fences, and walls relative to land use rights. And so the way I read the section at, at large is, it's giving you instruction on how you can orient a site, where you can place facilities, how you would put buffers and things like that in. And when it's talking about facilities that require late-night customers and activities shall be located away from residential areas, I find the more plausible read of that to be, when you're figuring out where, where on the rectangle to put the hotel, you wanna try to put it away from where it would be oriented toward residential facilities. I don't read it as saying you're allowed under your ordinance to prohibit a hotel. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you.
But, but as far as the parking lot, is that? Where I'm going with that, if, if the situ, situation they brought up, if that is considered part of the hotel, that fine gentleman there said it wasn't, then they're too close to the property lines for the residential. Okay? So that's what I need some clarification on.
Yeah.
Is the parking lot considered part of the facility? Can it be, or no?
I don't know that I would put too fine a read on what is and isn't a facility. You have effects that come with the whole, with the use of the site, right? People are gonna come in and out, and you can consider parking and the flow within the site and the traffic that the site would bring as part of your conditional use standards. And I think you can consider mitigations that you would put into place to help all of those things. But I would encourage you to have your conversation be about what are the reasonable mitigations that you can put in place to address that impact? Not can you prohibit this outright just because there's parking that abuts residential neighborhoods?
Okay. Anything else? Clear as mud?
Well, I do have one, one.
You're, you're able to, would you be okay with the applicant addressing that? He's, he's requesting to address your question.
Go ahead.
I, I know you just deferred to our council, I didn't wanna step on your toes.
No, no, I, I wanna defer to him. This is on, can you?
It is now, yeah.
All right. Just to address that, 'cause that's a very, very good question. If you look at the way the, the city has requested parking to be done, the, the city has requesting that it be behind the structure. The majority of the parking needs to be behind the structure. If the city wanted the majority of the parking in front of the structure, that would actually not be per city request, but so, the only opportunity to really have a parking facility, if you wanna call that a facility, which I've given you the definition of the hotel, it's actually requested and mandated by the city to actually be the majority of it behind. So hopefully that guides you a little bit in, in whether there is discretion in having parking abut that, that property line that, of course, abuts residential as well, as it does in every zone here, so.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
I just have a question on your fencing as part of your sound attenuation, the composite. What type of material is that, or what are you proposing?
I know it's an eight-foot composite fence, do we have a material selected?
Well, I, I'm just kinda really, has a study been done, done on that type of material for sound attenuation versus concrete, split face, cinder block? What would offer our residents the best sound attenuation quality?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. I don't know that we've done any kind of sound testing between the fencing. Our, our belief is that more of the buffering factor is gonna come from the vegetation and the raised trees along the berm, you know, and the fence will, of course, help, and, you know, that's definitely information we can, we can come out, so.
We need to stop the comments in the pub, in the audience, please. It's hard to understand what's going on with a whole bunch of chatter. Thank you.
Yes, that's, those were my two.
I'll, I'll just point out with the fencing, that, that is a mitigating factor, however the, I think, maybe Katie, you can clarify this, but I think elsewhere in the code, a six-foot fence is the maximum even allowed. But in this case, we're requesting, and, and they've agreed to an eight-foot fence, which I think is significantly higher, obviously two feet, and then, so I think that's a, that's a pretty, pretty substantial mitigation there in and of itself. And then the, the trees, I don't, I don't think that those are gonna be saplings, those are gonna be mature trees that are planted, it's not a, a hope this thing grows in the next 105 years. So, so that's part of what we're talking about, right? That, that the mitigation needs to be immediate, it can't be that they just plant trees that, you know, may grow sometime or may not, it's, it's a, it would be a fully mature landscape that, once it's in place, functions as intended, or as at least hoped.
Yeah, so the trees will have to meet a certain height requirement that's laid out in the code. Your other question about, sorry, remind me.
Fence height.
Fence, yes, residential properties are allowed to have six-foot fences on the sides and rear. If they did have, choose to have an eight-foot fence, they would need to get a conditional use permit for that.
Okay.
And they'd have to get a building permit as well.
Okay.
Well, of course, before on the fence topic, I did have another question, so, looking at like your total site rendering, like the finished site rendering, it's showing that composite fence all the way from Lambert makes the L clear back on the north side and up to 32, is that the plan? And it, it looks like there's trees all along that as well. And like, are you gonna do all of that at once? Are you gonna section it off? Because, you know, if, if we're trying to mitigate the hotel, it's not just, in my mind, directly behind the property, you need to expand.
Great. Yeah, and, and what we were trying to propose with those renderings is let everyone see the, the final build-out of what we're anticipating. Right now, the, we know that there are windows on the back of the hotel which face the western property boundary, and so the western property boundary is the, the boundary that we've currently agreed to, to fencing. The, the intent is to fully fence as the, as the project continues to develop and, and other portions come in, you know, different buildings up closer to that north end. We talked about this in Planning Commission, on the north and south sides of the hotel, there's no rooms that are there, there's stairwells and windows to the stairwells. And so, we, we, you know, we, we want, we will fully fence it when it's all said and done, but right now, we're hoping to only fence the west side as shown. So, but we're, we're open to, to fencing on the north end is, if that's something that the council sees beneficial, so.
That, just to be clear, that was a request of the Planning Commission is, is to have the, the buffering and the fence go around that north end.
I understand, I guess my question is more is like, how far are you planning on doing if you just built the hotel? Like, are you gonna go 50 feet to the north, 50 feet to the south? Are you gonna stop like, hey, here's our square? Are you going to stop like, hey, here's our square. We're going to square it off right where that ends?
Great question. I think this is more of a dialogue here than anything. If you look at the site plan as a whole, we want to absolutely carry that west and north. The cost factor of doing that, since we're here for the CUP for just the hotel, I think it's a dialogue that needs to happen, right? If we're going to bring the rest of that zone up to grade and then add the berm, add the fence, add the trees, that's a significant cost increase. And so, you know, the hope would be, let's figure out a solution to where we can bring that from Lambert on the west side to the property line of the hotel and that that specific CUP that we're talking about. And then, you know, at that point, we could stop or come up with some sort of a solution and then continue it as we work towards that phase.
Yeah, my my intention is to figure out how much, because I think the hotel, I mean, it's the first thing you want to build, right? That's what you're here for to ask about. And I guess how much mitigation are you going to do is my question. I understand you don't want to fence the entire property because it's going to be vacant lot there, vacant lot here. I get that part. I don't think, I don't think, this is my personal opinion, going straight back from the hotel property line is enough of a mitigation. I think you need to expand past that. I'm not saying all the way, but at least some. So that if you're coming in at an angle, you're not just like, well, I think that looks silly anyway. But that, you know, it's just kind of, that's where my my mind's going with that.
Yeah, no, I, and I think that's, again, it's an open dialogue. I think we're open to conversation. Just from our side, though, it is, you know, if we do the whole thing, that is a significant cost.
Yeah, and I think that's Clayton, part of of this condition use process is that that's one of those conditions that we could, we could certainly talk about and and possibly impose in order to mitigate those reasonably anticipated detrimental effects that we're talking about in the code. You know, even because I don't disagree with what you're saying. You know, maybe even without adding, you know, the fence all the way around that property line, maybe going a few, you know, fifty or a hundred feet past and then just, you know, bringing a temporary fence out to the eastern property line of the hotel. Maybe something like that helps to mitigate, you know, so lights and stuff aren't shining in the home that's on the end of the cul-de-sac. You know, something like that that we could work through, you know, that would look nice but might be a temporary fix until the rest of the project goes. Be a little less expensive, but also still work toward that mitigation.
Agreed.
Or something, you know, similar to that.
And then just one other question while you're standing there. I do appreciate that the the west side windows won't open and that there's no balconies. I think I think that's good faith on mitigation. I would, I mean, just to go a little bit further, I'm not demanding it. I'm just asking if you've considered frosted glass? Like, if that's something you consider, I don't know. Maybe that's like too far. I just think maybe that would help alleviate some worries. But that's still allow light in, but you don't have people staring out their windows at people's yards, which is what people are concerned about. So just just a thought.
Okay, anything else, Clayton?
Not for the developer.
Well, I mean, now's the time for, whether it's for the developer or anyone else.
Okay, so, I don't know if this is more of a hardwood problem than a hotel problem, but I am bothered by the water situation. I I do think that, one, what's the legal requirement for somebody to mitigate that kind of runoff into other people's property? And on top of that, I think it's just being a good neighbor. And I think we should at least request that that's mitigated because I know I wouldn't appreciate if that was happening to my property.
We've talked to them about getting the SWIP controls up.
Do we have a timeline on that or just like, eh, kind of whatever?
It's in motion.
It's in motion?
Yeah, so we'll get started on it tomorrow, getting the SWIP in place. We'll, of course, the SWIP has a plan, notice of intent, and then, of course, installing the structural controls. And so we'll, we can start working on that tomorrow. So the processes for the SWIP is is clear and we can, we'll follow that and get it taken care of. I would like to point out too, in the site plan, as we look at the development of the site, we are proposing stormwater controls as we develop things. So we do have the vegetated bioswell that runs down the property line. We do have grading. We have temporary berms that we're showing on those plans. Those are all things that we are putting in place to handle that. And of course, we're open to to more controls if if we need to. But once the site starts to develop, you know, and the water is collected from the hotel and directed into the vegetated bioswell, it gets treated. The vegetated bioswells are very effective at removing oils and greases. They're very, they're really effective at sediments, those kinds of things. And so a lot of those will take care of themselves as we move forward with this, with this site development, so.
But there may need to be some temporary mitigation as far as that water goes. I mean, there's, there's water all over that whole piece and there has been historically for basically ever.
Yeah.
Right, no, I agree, yeah, I I understand.
We'll, we'll work with engineering and we'll come up with a a plan. We'll get some control, perimeter controls in place. And if they're not effective, we'll improve.
Well, and and my immediate concern is more of like the flooding of adjacent property. And and I've seen your renderings on those, those, what do you call them?
Swells.
The swells, yeah, it looks good to me as far as that goes. But yeah, like, that'd be my immediate concern. So that's that's having an effect right now.
Right now, well, and we'll, we'll get it taken care of.
Okay. And then I guess this is more of a question for legal. Is what is like an applicant's responsibility as far as mitigating crime? Like, is there a legal definition for that? Because I know that's a big concern. Or is it just like, hey, this happens everywhere and they don't, they don't have a legal responsibility to do certain things?
They they have to create a safe site, right? And so there are things that you have in your conditions that relate to crime that you can require them to have. You could require adequate staffing. You could require that they have some kind of a safety plan in place. You can address things like how the site's located and and how it's oriented. You can address lighting and and factors like that. You will have as a city, certain impact fees that they would pay that relate to the physical costs of providing policing and law enforcement services. And, you know, they would pay into that just like anybody would. You can't hold them responsible for the behavior of individuals that are not them, right? Just as you couldn't hold a neighbor responsible because a crime occurs on his neighbor's property. So there is a limit, you know, to where you could go. But if they're, if they're aware of crime and they're allowing that to occur, they could bear some responsibility to that. But that's kind of in a nutshell what your, your rights are to to compel action on the part of the developer.
Okay.
I think that's all my questions that I have.
Clay, go ahead.
Yep, I can go. First, I just want to, you know, we've, it's been a concern that a lot of us on the council had about just the lack of public engagement. You know, it's not fun up here making decision when there's, I'm like, God, I want to hear what people have to say and I'm trying to figure that out because, you know, a lot of stuff I don't know. So it's, it is encouraging to see this level of engagement. You know, cup, there's three main words tonight that I, that come across that have stood out, obviously code, reasonable, and compromise. We all know that at the end of the day, we are, you know, we have to follow the law, right? You know, we can't, whether we like it or not, we can't retroactively change stuff. We can make good decisions moving forward and learn, having lessons learned. There's a lot of, a lot of the things that were, you know, brought up tonight are, you know, whether it's a code or a, you know, a concern about safety or, you know, lighting, that kind of stuff. Like, those are very reasonable concerns. And then compromise. Byron, I really like what you said about that. You know, it's, it's, this is a kind of a lesson for all of us on, you know, property rights and where that goes, and it's not so narrow, narrow. One thing that on that, you know, I I sat down with, you know, your team and I'll admit I was, I entered that very disgruntled, I guess, you know, and I left, my mind wasn't changed, but I was, you know, I was impressed by your guys' willingness to mitigate and to compromise. But going back to, you know, the the effort that, you know, the citizens have put towards this, like, it's not fun. I'd probably rather chase into Taliban than up here making this decision. But, you know, I think I can speak for all of us. We're glad to do it to serve because we love this this community. I, I, I think it's important that we truly vet, you know, all these concerns, whether they're they're code. And maybe we find out that it's not, you know, but I don't want to just take, you know, one attorney's word over it. Like, I want to make sure to, for you guys, we do our due diligence on this. And I am, like I said, I, this is why, this is what kind of made me want to do this is because I'm I'm the newest tier out of anyone, you know, and I, I love it, though. And I want to help with that. And it's, there's some valid concerns and I want to make sure that you guys have the trust, that they trust us, that we are beyond reasonable doubt their voices and we are, we're listening. Because if we don't do that, that puts us in a situation like we're at with big government, right? And so I think it's, it is our duty to do that. You know, I'm not a John Dutton, I'm more of a Casey type. But I want to, I want to, you know, I've been impressed by a lot of the effort and I think it's it's just to go great lengths to make sure that we vet all of these things. And if it comes out, I want, I think it's also just that we all accept that. If it goes, if it is truly vet and we come, it gets down to it that this is the code and this is what we need to abide by, we, you know, accept that. And this might turn into a win-lose. I don't want it to be a lose-lose situation. And, you know, like I said earlier, I have been impressed by the hardwood teams' willingness to make concessions instead of asking for concessions. And, you know, I, I think it's very important that we, we do that. So I think that's all I have.
Well, I would, I would echo the same thing. I mean, I know there's sentiment in the community that council doesn't listen to anybody. That's all we're doing is listening. But there's a responsibility on this side of the table to follow the law and the code. And we have to sit there and figure out what that is. And like you talk about, I, I have personal opinions. I have emotions about stuff like this, right? I have to try and turn that off at a certain point and just go by what the letter is because that's my responsibility once I get up here. And and in the end, we might have different ideas on what that is. But people just need to understand, just like Clint said, we do this because we cared about the community, not because it's the most fun I've ever had either, you know. But I wanted to to be involved. I wanted to feel like, you know, people were being listened to. And I know sometimes I get on my soapbox and maybe that's a little annoying for people on council. But the reason I did this and I wanted this from my representatives was I want to know your thought process when you make a decision. So it's not just, oh, well, he just did it for whatever reason I can make up in my mind. Like, this is the thought process and maybe I don't even like my decision, but this is how I got there and this is what I feel like I have to do. So that's, that's what we're all trying to do with every decision that we make, every single one of them. But I do appreciate you guys being here. It's it's intimidating because when you get zero people, like eight meetings in a row, and then all of a sudden, we can't even hold everybody in our brand-new council room. You know, it's intimidating. But I'm not afraid of of what's going to happen when I make my decision because at the end of the day, when I make my decision, it's the one I feel is the best decision, whether I like it or not. So that's my soapbox, I guess.
Thanks. Shannon, anything, any questions, concerns?
Well, you brought up all the questions. I'm concerned about the water. Me personally have been flooded out a lot, so I do understand that. Spring is really bad with the runoff, so we need to get with the, but you said you've already talked to Scott, the other Scott, Simpson, and stuff about that. So that was answered. And I do want to thank all of the people that are here. Like Clayton said, you look out there and there's zero people there and you're like, hmm, what am I even doing up here? You know, we could have done this over the phone. But this, it it is intimidating, but it's also rewarding that you guys care about it as much as we do. I wouldn't still be up here. When I ran last time, I begged people. There's some of you out there that I begged to run and get up here instead of me. But you won't. It's coming up this time. Put your name on the ballot and come up here and run because it's not as easy as y'all think. Y'all, I guess I went to Texas over the camp.
That's all right.
But, but anyway, I want to do what's right for the city. I want to do what's right for the developer and I want to do what's right for the neighbors. Somebody's going to lose a little, somebody's going to win a little. I don't think anybody's going to win big, big, big or lose big. So about the parking, we kind of got that answered. Is it a facility? Is it not a facility? You guys have way more parking than you need. Maybe put a bigger berm with that. I mean, I like the parking. I pull a big long horse trailer wherever I go. I'm not going to pull it to your thing because I live, you know, a mile away. But I do like that. But if that would be a compromise to help the citizens have bigger berm, less parking, I mean, I, I don't know. That was just an idea we could float out there. But then, I, I don't know. I don't want to lose the parking either and I don't think anybody else does. But I do want to thank y'all and we really have a tough job tonight. So I just don't, I don't want the city to get sued and I think we're going to get sued one way or the other. So we just better pick who's going to sue us, you know, or whatever. Because I, I don't see the decision tonight not coming up with a lawsuit. So I'm just trying to watch out for the city and that means all of you guys too. It's not just us, so.
Can you also respond to your parking?
Sure, sure.
I think they're, we're willing to consider anything. The key in having excess parking is for those vehicles. As you could see, there were the trailer parking spots.
Yep, that's what I like.
Which is important. People are going to come here with things.
They are.
And the most important thing about having sufficient parking is we want people to stay out of the streets and the neighborhoods. That's the most important thing. So we're more than happy to find that balance that you would like. But I always feel as a, as a resident of any city, the most important thing is to err on the side of prevention for parking on on streets, private and city. So but we're willing to to look at anything you would like.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm done, I'm done.
Yeah, of course.
I, I want to bring this up to kind of clarify some of the statements that were made by a lot of the people. And to be quite honest, when I first read it in our code, and it's in reference to the hotel being away from in those two keywords, I'm not sure if everybody in the audience, Katie, we didn't send Brad's response from the abudsmen just to us. I'd like to kind of read that. And it goes off what Clayton says. Setting up here, we all have our own opinions. We all have our own thoughts on it. We have to put those aside and we have to follow the law. The law, Brad reached out to the abudsmen's office with that specific verbiage of saying away from. And it's a couple of paragraphs long, but basically what they said, the abudsmen says, we cannot, that is not an enforceable term for us to deny the conditional use. If we do, we open ourselves up from a lawsuit. Then the the developer can come to us and say, no, you've broken the law. So, and we are governed by that group. We even had the abudsmen come to our meetings. We had a special meeting with the planning commission and the council together and they gave us direction on that. So I know that's not what you really want to hear because a lot of you hinged your complaints on those two keywords. But the abudsmen, by law, us setting up here, we're bound to follow that. So we cannot use that as a mitigating factor to say no, to refute the conditional use.
Thanks. Okay, any, anything else from council?
I, oh, this is going to never end.
We got all night.
Well, I planned on four hours. We may have to stretch that out a few couple. I just have a, like, just to clarify, Scott, because this is my understanding and if I'm wrong, I want to know. Water issues. We know we had to shut, like, restrict water this past summer. We know we had lots of problems. Was that, this is my understanding, that's because we had old infrastructure that we were working on replacing and it just all decided to fail at the same time, basically. And, and we've taken steps and we put in factors that that should not happen again barring some crazy event.
Correct. With the new well, it, well, if all three wells go, if two of the three wells go down again on the same night, yeah, we might have to restrict water again. But we have three wells now instead of two, so we have more redundancy than we did before.
Okay. And, and one of those is brand new with a giant tank, basically. And that's hooked up to the city?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, Clayton, can I address something that I've seen a lot and questions in the community? So, about water restrictions, we do have a watering schedule that is part of our code that was added two or three years ago. And we do restrict watering to certain days of the week for everyone, regardless if we have a ton of water that year or not.
Right, right.
That's just trying to use our water in a smart way.
Well, and I, yeah, and I think what the, the concern was, was we would shut off watering, period, total.
Yeah, the outdoor watering, that was related to the.
But we have had that, like, hey, odd days, even days between these hours. I think that's just smart water use in general.
Yeah, the state, the state asks us to have water conservation and that's one of the things we added was having people water on different days so that not everybody's watering every day of the week, so that we try and conserve some water.
Right. And we did also add that incentive to de-grass your properties and stuff where someone will give you money to do that, right? That, so that's applied. I, I know that's really not on topic, but, yeah.
Well, it kind of is. I mean, it's, it's still something to be considered and, and they will have to turn in water that, you know, to meet, to meet those requirements. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's relevant, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, our landscaping code says that water conservation is a primary consideration. So I feel, the planning commission approved their landscape plan and felt like it had appropriately, they didn't have.
Excessive grass.
They have the bio swell, which is different.
Right, right.
But other than that, they don't have, like, park strips, things that we don't allow in our code.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a valid concern. I think, I think water is, is a big issue. I think water's always going to be an issue in this state. So, you know, making sure that that infrastructure exists is, is able to support any development, I think, is absolutely relevant and part of our responsibilities. So I think that's.
And Clayton, just to expand on your question there, we did have a problem with woodland well. There, that's the motor that blew up. But it went out on a Sunday night and we mobilized, we had that well back on and producing Tuesday morning.
Oh, I, no, I know. Everybody left.
We went out for very.
So, yeah, I understand that. So I just wanted to address, because I know there are concerns that, hey, we're having to shut off our water in the summer. And I, I'm hoping we fix that with the new wells and replacing old equipment that really should have been replaced a while ago. But it's done now.
And I, just back on the water thing, I get a lot of people coming up to me and like, why are you letting all these buildings come in? You, Francis is out of water. And I try to explain to them, not in a rude way, but I'm kind of just an old farm girl and I'm kind of rude. It's like, it's not that we're out of water, it's that we can't trust you to not overuse water. So, you know, long story short, if everybody would restrict themselves, we are not. Yeah, you know, we're not out. We have the three tanks and they run and if they run, if they go down, then yeah, we have to, but.
Yeah, let's put that on the record very, very clear. Francis City is not out of water. There is no water crisis in Francis.
Okay.
There is no water crisis in Francis.
Now it's Jeremy.
Um, okay.
Now I'm done.
Any other comments from council? Okay, um, I, I've, I've heard a, a lot of different things tonight, many of which I think that we have, through the planning commission process, come up with mitigation factors, mitigating factors for those concerns. Many of those are addressed in the staff report. I think all of those are relevant. I think those seem reasonable. And we've been given a positive recommendation from the planning commission on all of those mitigating factors. There has been a couple brought up tonight that I think merits some discussion. And Clayton, one of those was yours, and that is, you know, the possibility of a temporary fence coming down that northern border of the hotel. Just, you know, I think it needs to look nice. Obviously, you would want it to look nice as well, but I think that helps to mitigate some of those reasonably anticipated detrimental effects for the properties to the north. I know it's quite a distance still, but, you know, it's a, it's a flat, open space and headlights will travel that far for sure. So I think that that's a valid, a valid concern that could be addressed. So I, I, you know, I'm thinking maybe, you know, fifty to a hundred feet past that hotel, the building border, and then down to the east, you know, maybe just a hair past the, the eastern border, something that, you know, could be temporary, that maybe you could reuse. I don't know. You can figure that part out. But I think there, there's some value in having something there to help mitigate that. Happy to have a discussion about that, but that's one of the things I'd like to maybe see.
You know, one, one thing, I think the planning commission, they re, they wanted to see the fence on the west side and the north side. I don't know if they included the landscaping and everything. The one thing you could do is say, you got a landscape so far, but we need to install the fence on the west side and the north side. That'll keep the headlights from going out into people's homes and things like that.
Sure. Yeah, and I, I, again, I think there's some dialogue we had there, so I, I, I don't know exactly what that looks like. But before we go to emotion or anything, let's kind of hash some of those details out. But I think that's something that, that would help to mitigate that reasonably anticipated detrimental effect of just the hotel itself. Until the project's completely built out, that's going to be, you know, a possible detrimental effect. The other, the other thing I've heard about is the, the water control, temporary water control. Scott, do you have any counsel on what that may need to look like? Is there, is the temporary stuff that's in their current plan enough? Or do we need to require something more in order to, to just mitigate that, at least on a temporary basis, until the bio swells are built and everything's in place so that, you know, it's pretty common that, you know, even the farmer irrigating his field, if he's got wastewater, it's kind of his responsibility to channel that away from his neighboring properties and take care of that so we don't flood people. I think that same principle applies here where we don't want this to, you know, negatively impact the neighboring properties due to runoff or whatever the case may be. Groundwater's entirely different. We can't control that, but.
Yeah, that's, that's one thing that my question with, I guess my recommendation with not approving the site plan when we get to that point. Because we've still got to work through that and they've got to get their slip in place, so.
But do we need to add that temporary runoff control as part of the conditional use permit?
We could add that as one of the conditions, yeah.
Okay. So, so be brainstorming on that one because I think that's important. I just, I want to make sure that, you know, we don't have some unanticipated problem with, with runoff water and, and those things. I think that's pretty reasonable. The, the other, the other thing that I heard is about trash pickup. I think that's actually a valid concern. My, I've got a dumpster in my driveway and they emptied it at six in the morning, which doesn't bother me, but it might bother my neighbors. I don't know. Hopefully not. But, but I do think that that's valid. I don't know if there's a way.
Like, could they be, could they be limited to those hours, the delivery hours? Isn't that what, seven to?
Nine to seven.
Nine to seven.
Or nine to seven, yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I just don't know how much control the business owner who has a dumpster has over the service provider that
When they pick it up?
takes the trash out, right? Like, I just don't know.
I think you can.
I mean, you can always request it.
I think you'd say, if you want my business, there's what you have to do.
Can you hold them to it? I don't know. That, that, that gets a little more difficult, I, I understand. Right. Perfect. Okay, so let's, let's make a note to add that as a condition, that, that, that's mitigated so that the trash collection is during those same delivery restricted hours. The, the other thing that I heard, Shannon, you brought up, is the, the less parking versus a larger berm possibility. I, I, I would be hesitant with that personally, just because I think that, that, that an eight-foot fence is significantly higher than most. The berm and the evergreen buffering is pretty significant. Planning Commissioner Marchant actually requested a specific type of tree and more of them than was originally planned. And they've agreed to install those, which I think is also very helpful in mitigating those things. And so I, I would be careful with minimizing the parking because of the concern of pushing that to the streets and things like that. So I would be a little concerned about that as a mitigating. I think that actually may be less mitigating. The intention might be good, but I think you actually may create a larger problem with parking by doing that. So you don't actually solve any problems.
You make more.
Right. I think the potential exists anyway, at least in my opinion, for what it's worth. The other thing that I, that I was looking at is the flow of the project as a whole. So currently, you know, with the drying, the, the, the grocery store and things on the drying are not going to be constructed immediately. And so there's quite a distance where, you know, if you access the property from Lambert, that you're traveling across the parking lot or down, down a road. I guess I'm just thinking out loud, wondering, is there a way that we can, with signage or some other option, sort of try to, I, I know you can't control this entirely, but sort of try to control that most of the access is via thirty-two, not Lambert? Does that help mitigate some of those concerns? I, I don't know the answer to that. I'm just kind of thinking out loud on that issue. To where, you know, you have a little less traffic on Lambert and you push most of that off of the highway, where it's more able to handle those, those concerns?
Well, that, that brings up a question, like, I know UDOT's in charge of thirty-two. But was there any question about getting two access points on thirty-two and maybe one on Lambert to mitigate that more?
So there, there is access on Lambert. There is currently one access on thirty-two. I don't know what your conversations have been with UDOT.
As far as the second one? UDOT only allows accesses so many feet.
Right.
On that road. So they've already been, UDOT already granted the one access that's there. Before it didn't have, I can't, I don't, I don't, I don't think it had access off of thirty-two before. Everything came off of Lambert. So they, they got approval from UDOT for that one access and it had to be so far from Lambert. And then the next access that comes in the future will have to be so far from this one.
In other words, the likelihood of getting a second one for this project is minimal, to zero.
Are there restrictions on, like, lane size for that access? Like, could it be two lanes in, two lanes out, or is that be one in, one out?
No, we, we've, we've asked that they widen that so that we have turning lanes going in and out of there. It's not just going to be two lanes. We've asked that they had.
Make it a larger access?
Yes.
That's actually part of the condition.
That's, that's part of the, my comments on the site plan as they do.
Just, just a quick question for you guys.
On both. And actually, with both Lambert, they've, they've got to widen that to have turning lanes so there's just not two.
Widen Lambert itself?
Yes, but the access where they come on to Lambert, we've asked us to widen that so that they have turning lanes coming in and out.
Okay.
Okay, just, just for my information and maybe everybody's, this whole project, are you going to pave it all at once? Or are you just going to pave where the hotel goes? Because that would make people only come in there until you get the whole thing. You won't want to drive across the, or row.
Hold up the civil site plan. That shows essentially. Oh, sorry.
The civil site plan shows essentially what we're proposing at this stage. So, so essentially, we would be widening, we'd be widening Lambert and we would have the paving around the hotel. And then we would have the paving out to thirty-two. So essentially, everything you see in gray right there would be paved in this stage of the development.
Okay, so that might alleviate them coming off of Lambert until August.
Yeah, and with thirty-two being the main thoroughfare, I, I think the majority of the traffic is going to come off of thirty-two, just as they put in their Google Maps when they're driving along, you know.
Is this access point on your red green, is that the one that's existing now?
Uh, it's close. The, the access point actually is a little bit too close to Lambert. It does need to be moved up. So there, if, if you look really close, there's a little outline of the existing and it needs to move north about twenty, thirty feet or so. But for all intensive purposes, yes, that, that's pretty much the location right there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, so I mean, I, I think I agree with you. Generally speaking, people are going to use thirty-two. I'm just wondering if it's worth adding a condition of some signage that encourages that a little bit, rather than, than just hoping that it happens.
Perfect. We have one of those waving signs that blows up and, you know, points people.
If you grant signage, because of course that's kind of the seats for, if they grant their lawn.
Sure. And, and I, you know, again, I'm kind of shooting from the hip on a couple of these things, just trying to think outside the box maybe a little bit to try to sort of mitigate some of these possible detrimental effects.
And I think when you put it in your notes, you could even just put it as applicant to study, you know, and we can really look into it as well, you know, as a, as a condition, so.
Yeah, thank you. The, the last, well, actually, two, two more things as far as things that, that need to be considered tonight. One of the things that we've heard is crime. And while I may not be considered an expert, I happen to have some pretty extensive experience dealing with crime. And, and a couple of the things that, that give me a little bit of concern is, one, you know, crime occurs everywhere. I, I can tell you that most of you in this room would, your head would spin if you knew the things I know about your neighborhood. Francis is not as crime-free as you think it is. It's a great place to live, but there are things that happen in every community and that's out of our control. We, we can't control individuals. We don't know what they may or may not do. I also am concerned about an increase of crime. But again, you, you can't control individuals and you can't guess what they may or may not do in any given circumstance. So, so crime, while it is a, I think, a valid factor, my concern with that is there's no way to measure what may occur. So I think we, we speak with the applicant and we say, hey, we, we, we want you to have, you know, adequate staff in place. We want you to have the lighting, which I think we've already covered. We want you to have a plan in order to, you know, how to deal with things that may come up. So I think some of those, those possibilities can work as a mitigating factor for crime. But as far as saying, because there's a hotel, crime will occur. In my world, because there's people, crime occurs. That's just how it works. So I, I think that's a valid concern. I think it's something to be considered, but I think it can be mitigated with some plans and some staffing issues that, that will help to mitigate those things. I, I certainly think while solving crime doesn't prevent it, it certainly helps minimize the effects of crime. And also, to some degree, camera systems and being watched does help prevent crime to some small degree. So I think, you know, security systems and things like that are important. You probably already know that. So those are my, my main concerns. And then the la, lastly, to Clint's point, and vetting all of these reasonably anticipated detrimental effects. This, as you know, has been a project that's been at the forefront of city council, planning commission for quite some time. And it's not lost on us that there are reasonably anticipated detrimental effects and that we must mitigate those. But also, we must follow the law. Now, what we've determined is that the city code has some problems, which we've identified through this process and which kind of puts us in a tight spot where we now have to default to the state code. And while I don't love that, it is a fact and that's, and that's where we are. So as part of that process of, like Clint said, vetting all of these concerns and vetting all of the, the mitigating factors, we have, we have held trainings with the property rights ombudsman with both the city council and the planning commission. We've had individual and specific conversations with employees and representatives from the property rights ombudsman's office. We've talked with not only our own city attorney, but several other attorneys who specialize in land use. And we've spoken with other land. And we've spoken with other land use experts, all of which agree and, and among which there are no disagreements that the state code trumps the city code in this circumstance. And that much like is listed in the property rights ombudsman's office email, our city code is unenforceable, which puts us in a position where if the reasonably, reasonably anticipated detrimental effects can be mitigated, which I believe we're working toward and we've substantially done in most cases, we must approve this conditional use permit. I know that's super unpopular with many folks. However, our duty as elected officials who represent the city and, and all of you fine folks who live here, it's our duty to follow the law and, and do the things that sometimes are difficult but are right. And so I'll leave it at that. But I do think we should have some conversations before this goes to a vote about some of these concerns.
I mean, just as you were saying that, like, I'm just running through my mind, kind of like the whole thought process thing again. You know, I've talked to some people that are in the West Hills annexation spot and the plans that, that they have for West Hills scares the crap out of me. It's nothing, or this is nothing compared to what they wanna do two miles up the road from us. And I wish that this would stop. I wish that we could only, you know, let good people in that we liked. And man, that'd be awesome, but that's not realistic. And, and there's an interest in the Camas Valley into making it grow and for people to come in and stake their claim and to buy property and to try and, you know, better themselves for it. And I'm all for that. I, I want my personal rights respected, just like I want every single one of yours' personal rights respected. That's what I want. That's why we're, we're living in America, because that's what we do, right? And we don't always agree and that's hard for me too. My neighbors do stuff all the time that I wish I could walk over there and say, hey, you can't do that. I, I would love to do that, but I don't get to, right? And they don't get to do it to me. And, and I know it's a concern and this, this weighs so heavy on us. Like, I felt like I was going blind before I got here. I'm dead serious. I was telling my wife, I can't see. I don't know what's going on. So it's heavy, right? It's heavy. And we understand and we're listening to everybody. I probably share a lot of your sentiments, like personally, I do. I share a lot of them. But we gotta be smart. We just, we gotta be smart about it. It, it's coming. It's just coming. It's coming. We've been found out. They're coming. So we gotta do our best. And that includes all you guys. I love a bunch of the points you guys brought up. They're all super valid. I'm, I'm really impressed. How much work has been put into this thing? And I, and I, and I want, I want us all to, like we said, mitigate those things, discuss them. How can we help address these concerns? And we're not all gonna be one hundred percent satisfied at the end, I think, but somebody said that's a good deal when everyone leaves unhappy.
I think that's a Byron saying.
If everyone leaves equally pissed off.
Yeah. So, yeah, and, and we appreciate you guys. I, I know you've expressed it's not easy for us and we, we appreciate that. And we're just trying to do a good job and we're found out. So expect more of this. We should all expect more of this. It's not gonna stop as much as we want it to. So let's do it smart. Let's steer what we can steer and take as little of a butt kicking as we can, cause it's coming.
I, I agree. And then before we get to the actual conditions of having this discussion, I'll, I'll make one more comment to your point. And that is that, you know, you know, we need to do things smart. We've recognized there's some holes in the city code, which is why we've now started to review those codes so that any new applicant now has to wait until there's some changes made and some updates made to make us compliant with state code, which helps us to at least alleviate some of these problems for the future. This case, we're not able to do that. We can't retroactive those types of things, but, but we've recognized there's some problems. We're fixing the code in order to make it more compliant, to make it more, to make it make more sense so that it, it protects everyone long-term in the future. Unfortunately, in this case, it doesn't apply. So I think let's talk about some of these other mitigating factors, how we can make those work, how we can get those into the, into the conditional use and then take the conditional use permit to a vote. Katie?
With the planning commission, it was really helpful. I pulled up my conditions on a Word document and I typed into it. Would that be helpful in this case?
I, I think so.
I've, I've been keeping a list of those that were mentioned and I could maybe read those off and then you all can tell me whether I've captured them accurately.
Okay, yes.
And whether you want them. And I've got three down so far. One relates to water. And it's immediate improvements to manage water runoff planned to be approved by the city engineer. The second was noise related to garbage collection. And it was no trash collection in the evening, night, early morning hours. Limit trash collection to seven AM to seven PM. The third one was traffic and it was the applicant to study and, and install signs directing hotel ingress, egress and traffic flow. There was discussion also on fencing, but I didn't hear kind of a resolution on what you wanted there.
And so the underlying parts up here, that's what I added. Those were the planning commission additions. So I just kept those in. It sounds like we are in a risk in keeping.
So I think, so I think the evergreen buffer on the north boundary, I, I think that that's important.
Sorry, I was on the wrong one, actually. Hold on a minute.
What I was gonna say though is I think that should come as part of the site plan for the rest of the commercial project. Not, not the northern boundary, not part of, well, I don't know. Never mind. It probably needs to be part of the mission.
Okay, well, we can talk about that more if we need to.
Your lawyer would say you don't have to negotiate against yourself, so let, let them push back if they can't do it. And if, if it's reasonable to them, then maybe we can get it now.
Okay.
Talk myself out of it anyway.
What our additions are. I meant to turn on.
So, yeah, I was gonna say, the time that, that Jamie had listed for the trash pickup, I think was inaccurate. The nine AM to seven PM is the correct one.
Yeah, I had none.
Yeah, because I, I want, I think it should mirror the delivery.
Yeah, I just put it in here. Deliveries and trash pickup only allowed during daytime hours. Okay, what was the other condition you had? But I didn't get, I got the water.
The traffic signage coming off of thirty-two.
Can you say that one more time?
Yeah, and it was the applicant to study and install signs directing hotel ingress, egress and traffic flow.
Okay.
Two, two, sorry, thirty-two.
Yeah, yes.
Crime impact fee?
So I don't know if he said crime impact fee. We don't currently have a crime impact fee. I don't think we can impose one arbitrarily.
But, but all of your, all of your existing fees, the, they're responsible for that separate from the conditional use application and approval.
I believe it's taking, consider, impact fees, consider that.
Yeah, there's just not a specific one. But cr- but crime, I think, is part of that, the mitigation. And so I don't know what that looks like. Maybe you guys can answer that. What, what does your staffing look like? What, what, what are you currently doing to mitigate those concerns? And then maybe we need to talk about what we may want to change about that process, if anything.
Yeah, no problem. So that's one of the benefits of being attached to a brand, right? Is we have brand standards where we are required to take trainings regarding safety of guests and anyone who's around our facility. And some of those trainings were mentioned tonight, but that's one thing that we have to do and that's a benefit of being attached to a brand. We have twenty-four hour front desk representation at our properties. So someone has to be on property twenty-four hours a day. And that's also a brand standard from Best Western is you have to have staff at the hotel twenty-four hours a day. Other mitigation efforts that we, that we implemented at our properties is security systems, cameras, controlled access using key cards, RFID key cards that doors locked during certain hours of the night that only guests can have, can get into, including the front door, side doors, all entrances. If you have any ideas of other ways we can mitigate or improve safety inside of our property, we'd be more than willing to listen. But just, we'd want to remind everyone that guest safety is our number one priority as well, right? Not just the concerns about the community, but we take our guest safety very seriously and equally is, is, is important. And so we're under duty to do that for our guests inside the property as well.
Do you guys have any specialized training to like recognize sex trafficking or things like that?
Yeah, so Best Western International, we have to take a course annually. Within the first thirty days of being hired, it's a specific course for sex trafficking. There's two really important trainings that we're required to take annually. And one of them is sex trafficking and the other one is carbon monoxide.
Can you fingerprint all your guests and like your background?
Can you hire Terry?
I don't think that's lawful, but a, a note for the council. So you're, you are approving a hotel use, not a hotel brand.
Yes.
Keep that in mind. So if you wish for any of the features of the security and safety that this brand implements, be on the property forever, you can write that into the conditional use permit.
I was actually just gonna suggest that.
So if you wanted, for example, the training requirement, the twenty-four hour front desk staff requirement, the controlled access requirement and the security system requirement, you could write that into the conditional use permit. And then whoever owns it as long as that conditional use applies, whether it's Best Western or a different brand, they would still have to have that same level of staffing, training, security system.
Yeah, and I think that's how, I think that's how it should be. It should just be written that those, those standards are met and kept. Now, question for legal. Is the, is, is it reasonable and or legal to request, you know, that they, that they hire, you know, security or off-duty law enforcement as security as part of that? You're starting to dip into their.
I don't know what the cost of that is. I think you could ask that to the applicant of, of is this a reasonable condition? And they can respond and indicate, you know, what the cost would be to, to implement that.
Does Best Western International have any sites that have armed security?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I think a lot of hotels I see have security on, onsite on premise.
I just lived in California for two weeks. The hotel I stayed in, very reputable, they had an armed guard at night.
Yeah.
And he patrolled the lobby, the hotel, and he also did a round through the parking lot.
Yeah. I, I, I mean, just a reminder, this is, this is Francis, right? It's a smaller community. No doubt, everything, I agree with what you've stated, but I would hope that our impact fees that are collected on this project, taxes that are collected on this project would help promote additional law enforcement in this area. I think it's needed as well.
See, that, that's probably, we don't have any in our city.
Right.
With an armed guard visually there, I think that would deter an honest crook, maybe, if that's even feasible. But if a call was to be made from your front desk to Summit County Sheriff, you can smack me if I'm wrong. But they are limited to the number of officers. It may not be, it's not gonna be a two or three minute response time unless that officer just happens to be in our neighborhood.
Well, yeah, so two things on that. One is we always have an officer assigned to the Camas Valley. So there's at least one officer assigned to the Camas Valley. So that does cut that response time from thirty, forty-five minutes that I've heard tonight significantly. Now, is, is there always an officer in Francis? No. Also, just because you have armed security does not mean that they can then take law enforcement action.
No, no, I agree.
So that, it doesn't eliminate a call to the police.
No, no, I agree. I was just saying a visual deterrent to, you know, like I said, a halfway honest group.
And let me speak to the criminality aspect. It is incumbent on business owners in cities and municipalities to prevent fostering an environment that would be conducive for breaking the law. Cities have the ability, as do municipalities, to control those environments. Requiring additional police force or armed guard in a private business, we start to, the, the, the long arms statutes and things where businesses and municipalities, what they can and can't do, we have to be careful with things like that. This is a, this is not a three hundred key.
Right.
Building here or, or, or structure. So we, we do wanna be careful of that. But I, the key in legally, I would just, as I instruct my clients and as I work with cities, the key is to wanna work with good people, many who actually live in the community. Some of these people are in Francis. They want to encourage that environment and they'll work with the city on those things. And there are opportunities where they can work side by side with the city for certain measures. If that's in the conditional use permit, I personally, just legally, we're gonna have problems because we're actually requiring businesses to come in side by side. And we start to then, I don't think we're just in gray area. I think we're, black and white is problematic here. But I do wanna say that that's something that, you know, that this business owner for safety plans and things of that nature, of course, that's, that's at the top of their mind and they'll work with the city on, on any reasonable measures. I wanna prevent that from being in the CP because I, I just can see that being very problematic and something that may not be allowable under CP.
So I actually think you're, I, I actually have a.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Rudd?
Go ahead.
I'm happy to go after you, man.
No, 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 go ahead.
Would, would you be open to a requirement that the hotel have a safety and security plan? And that when you do your periodic business license renewal, that that plan be renewed, be reviewed by the city along with crime data? To make sure they align?
Are you okay with that? I don't see any issue with that whatsoever.
I think that, what that would allow you to do is instead of inventing crime data hypothetically, that we really just don't know what it'll be, you can look at actual data periodically. And then you calibrate that security plan.
Right.
To that. And if, if the city doesn't think it's calibrated properly, then you can come back to a meeting like this and impose a condition that would be reasonable based on actual data.
Yeah.
I, I will tell you though, when you're making licensing, and I'm dealing with this right now in, in southern Utah, when you're, when you're conditioning licensing on certain factors, you have to codify in, in code requirements such as, you know, some people now are renting out properties and they're saying, hey, for our safety plan, if, if it's so big, we're gonna require fire sprinklers and things like that. Once you codify those, then you have a lot more ability to hold people's feet to the fire. But in this particular instance, the flow of information alone and then the ability to have that communication because they are required to provide that is something that I would think would be priceless for the council, the business owner and the community. Where you have an understanding, a, a, and a pulse on, on what's going on. I don't, I think that's fine. And I don't think you're, you're in any gray area by doing that. And I think we'd agree to that, so.
Thank, thank you. I, I actually agree and I apologize for opening the can of worms. As I thought through that, I, I started to think, well, okay, now I'm requiring a private business to hire a government employee. And I'm not sure that's a great plan. So anyway, I, I think let's write that in as a condition that they have a, that they have a safety, safety plan and that they provide that to us with some data or however.
And you want that for licensing, isn't that?
I, I think so, yeah.
Let me, I'll, I'll read you what I have written down and then both sides can give me a head nod if I, if I hit the mark. But it is that you would have in place a, a safety and security plan to be reviewed with crime data concurrent with business license renewal. And that'll happen at the same interval as, as your business licensing.
I like it. Do, do, did we add the, the already existing? I can't read that. It's too far away.
Safety measures to include twenty-four hour front desk staff?
Yeah, okay. So basically, whatever the standard is, they're currently meeting, it needs to remain the same.
That's right.
Okay, yep.
You're essentially writing in what they just described as the Best Western standard would have to apply if they, if they rebrand or it's no brand. They still would have to have those same things in place.
Can we say that it's at least?
And that's how she's written it. Yes, at a, she's written at a minimum.
Perfect. Way ahead of.
We don't care if they add more.
Yeah.
I think that's contemplated with providing the information and consultation with any additional records.
Sure. Sure. Okay. Anything else that I have missed that anyone would like to add or consider? Okay.
One thing, just change thirteen instead of any additional conditions, just say additional conditions as you. One thing, just change thirteen instead of any additional conditions, just say additional conditions as a requirement.
Yes.
So, and number nine applies to the flooding that's happening now, right? Not like they put a plan together for stuff that might happen in the future.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's immediate.
Or more immediate anyway.
Let me speak to that. We have not received, I talked to my clients, we are not aware of any complaints. It doesn't mean that it isn't happening. But it is just legally, any runoff from the property, the property owner is liable for that anyways. We are going to, we'll initiate immediately, but we have not had any complaints up to this point. Or we would've, we were happy to meet and discuss that previously, just so you know.
Yeah, and that's...
They have complained at every meeting. In all the public hearings, they have complained, so they have complained.
Okay.
So...
We have not received a phone call, a landlord to a landlord trying to...
Nothing specific, just in a public meeting.
I'm aware of concerns, I'm just not aware of specific instances. That's what we would need if it is currently happening.
Sure.
Then that would be something different. I mean, specifics are the requirement for us, but we're gonna do it anyways. But I just wanted to make that clear.
Perfect, thank you. What were you saying?
Well, no, just to restate that, he's correct. Whether they build a hotel or don't build a hotel, if there's runoff, the property owner's responsible for it.
Right.
And it sounds like what they need is not just general complaints that there is runoff. They need to know where it's happening. But it sounds like they're gonna look at it and work with the city.
But I just wanna make it clear, we're not aware of any specific instances where it is actually happening. If it is, we, I believe we would have taken care of it, right? Because it's required by us legally anyways, but we're gonna mitigate now.
Well, I think it's valid. You gotta know where the problem is in order to address the problem. So I think, you know, maybe there's some dialogue we had there, but that's not involving us. All we're asking is that whatever the problem may be, mitigate it.
I got one more thing on the, you know, the border fence and the trees. I'm not a big horse guy, but horses on their side of that usually, I think. I get, that fence is gonna be an adequate barrier, cause like horses and evergreen trees, is that an issue with health for horses or...
It shouldn't be a concern. My guess is, and maybe you guys as applicants can clarify this, that fence won't be on the property line. You'll have, you know, I'm guessing, if I were building it, I would have a foot or two between my fence and the property line. Meaning that I would want, if I were the property owner adjacent, I would put up my own, I would put up my own fence to keep my horses off the composite fence, cause it just doesn't make sense anyway.
The reality is, and this is where the law becomes just a terrible thing. And I believe Jamie may have experienced this quite a bit. I'm always dealing with boundary acquiescence claims, cause once you put a fence up and it remains for a certain period of time, any property on the other side of that fence, after a certain period of time, becomes automatically the neighboring property owner's land. And so if there was an agreement where there would be dual fences, that's fine. But if we're asking one fence, we would wanna put it on the property line because we don't wanna lose our square footage, our land. That's actually a lead, whether we like it or not, if we do not put it on the property line, we lose it. After twenty years, we can't risk allowing that, so.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't think of that, but I appreciate that thought. I do think eight-foot fence, there's no horse that can reach over that sucker anyway, so.
Well, let me tell you...
I mean, I've got thirty head and I got thirty head and I got six-foot fences, they don't reach over six-foot fences.
Yeah. Here's the interesting thing, under the law of boundary acquiescence, what it is, it states that it's monument. If there's a monument or some type of thing other than the fence that would denote that it is still the owner's, the developer's land, then that's sufficient. And it can be as much as something to where you can clearly see their landscaping ends and then the neighboring parcel's landscaping begins, or if they have a fence there. So as long as we keep it where it can be discernible from the public that this, in fact, case law, cause I've litigated this so much, case law says even if one party mowed their lawn in such a manner where it's easy for the public to say, the way those lines were mowed in that lawn, it was easily discernible that that was not the neighbor's property, then that was a monument in and of itself. We don't wanna play, we don't wanna be trivial here, and so we wanna make sure that it's clear. But if we need to put the fence a couple of feet off, as long as we can have verification of the way we landscape or do something, that it is still our property, that's all we would need, just to maybe argue the other side as well for you. So we can look at that with you. Right now, it'll be on the property line, maybe not if it's at the top of a berm though. So we'll work with the city on that to just make sure it's clear one way or the other.
I like it. Thank you. Does that answer that? Okay, any other comments, concerns, questions?
So right now, we have the, did you wanna make some changes to that northern subdivision boundary fencing? I know you talked before about fifty to a hundred feet, something like that.
Yeah, do we wanna, do we wanna, do we wanna, do we wanna do the whole northern and western boundary at once? Do we wanna, how do you guys wanna do this?
Well, I understand it'd be significant cost to fence the entire property line. I don't think it's sufficient to go straight back from the hotel and stop.
I agree with that.
It's gotta go out. And if it's a hundred feet, fine, like I'd rather have more than less, so we're saying fifty or a hundred, I'd ask for a hundred.
Well, I mean, I think he's gonna have something to say.
Sure.
I think the real question is, do we wanna go a hundred feet? Or do we wanna go the entire western and northern boundary as a condition of the hotel? It's going to get built at some point anyway. It's just a significant upfront cost. I understand that as well, I'm just, what's the most, what's the most reasonable? What's the most, you know, the reasonable mitigation of that effect? And then we can go from there.
Well, what about for the hotel part, what we're discussing tonight, just the western? And then the berm on the northern, and when they get it later, they can do it on the...
I don't know, what do you guys think?
Is that even too much?
So, we, to be honest, we haven't studied the idea of a temporary fence not going all the way. We do know that going the entire western boundary and the northern boundary is pretty cost prohibitive. And so I think we would appreciate the opportunity for like an either or, you know, either we can look into doing the entire fencing along that western and northern boundary or we do something more of that temporary, you know, say fifty, a hundred feet past the hotel and then, you know, something temporary along that northern border, so. Yeah, we'd be open to an either or on that. And we can study it a little bit further and kinda compare the two costs internally.
And let me say this, I actually presented to planning regarding this. And one of the concerns is doing civil twice. We don't wanna do civil work twice. If we were to build that out and then when we go to develop, we're gonna actually do some of that civil work multiple times. That becomes very cost prohibitive. So, but if we can, if it can work, we would love the option to do either or. We're gonna meet your requirements, either whether it's temporary or whether it would make sense if we can do enough civil to where we can put the fence in, put the trees in. We would have to probably put some of the curbing in as well. If that's doable and we can do it in one fell swoop, then we will do that. But the either or for us is the key, just so we can study it out. Either way, we'll meet the requirements for privacy and for mitigation for headlights, things of that nature. So if you would grant us that, that would at least give us that option.
Legal. Can we, can we, can we do an either or, say a hundred feet past the western boundary? And what, what do you think is reasonable coming to the eastern bound, on that northern boundary going to the east? Is fifty feet, a hundred feet, what's reasonable? Do we go to the edge of the hotel parking lot? What's reasonable there? And then can we then just say an either or option, but the preferred being full boundary?
Let me make sure, you all know the location better than I do. So what I'm understanding from this is the western boundary is agreed, that's to be fenced.
Yep.
And then on the northern side, the either or is they either do a hundred-foot permanent with the rest temporary or if it's feasible, you do a hundred percent permanent?
So, really, really what it is, is that we're, so if you think of a huge rectangle, we're really only looking right now at a chunk right here.
In the center.
In the center. But what we'd be willing to do is to go fifty feet, cause the key here is the homes behind, okay? The privacy mitigation behind. So we would wanna go, I would propose where you go fifty in excess on either side of the boundary of this particular parcel that the CUP is applying for. And then we would have the opportunity to either continue that on if we could get it all done with, without it being temporary.
You're talking about a permanent?
Yeah, permanent. Or we have the either or where we just do up the, I think it was, was it the south side?
North.
The north side with temporary fencing, where we connect to that fifty feet of excess to where it's temporary, where we mitigate if we can't do the whole parcel in permanent. Either or will meet the need of the city. If it makes sense financially and if it's possible to be done without having to re-rip it out, then they have the option of doing it in one fell swoop for the whole development, and that would be great. But we just don't wanna do civil twice. We don't wanna have to rip trees out again and plant new trees if we're doing civil a second time and we put the fence in and trees and the berm all the way down. So we just want that option just in case. And hopefully that meets the requirement. So fifty feet in excess on either side along the westerly boundary and then go up the north to mitigate.
So I think that, I think some of that's reasonable. My, cause my concern is the home that's on that northern boundary. And, well, honestly, the western boundary concerns me, but by going fifty to a hundred feet past the hotel, which is this building, you capture that, especially if you box that in coming back to the east. But what I wanna make sure is that we mitigate the concern for that house that's on the far northern boundary that's a little bit east of the project. And so that's where my concern is, that home.
Right, so how long do you want us to go up on the north?
Well, I don't know, I don't know what that measurement would be.
I think you would, cause you're gonna have people driving down the road that comes off of Lambert Lane and lights are gonna be shining that to the north. And so maybe you bring the fence up to that so that it blocks the house, blocks the lights from going into those houses.
To the road?
From the entrance on Lambert.
From, yeah, from the entrance on Lambert, you can draw a straight line and say, well, we're gonna, on the eastern boundary of the rideaway, we're gonna have...
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Cause this won't be here.
We're gonna have the fence there. We don't need all the landscaping, that can come as the lots are developed. But on the north side, at least the fence is there to block lights and things like that.
And so if we have an either or, we'll put, if we can do the permanent, we'll do it. If not, we'll do the temporary up the lot line. And then once we get approval on the neighboring parcel, then we can do the permanent. But either or, we wanna mitigate that upfront, if that's what the city wants.
What's the definition of temporary, I guess, is my question?
Temporary fencing.
What, is temporary fencing?
Until, until...
I get, I'm...
Development.
What type of fence? Cause we're requiring a solid fence, what's temporary fencing?
What's...
Barbed wire?
Well, you do barbed wire with fabric on it or something of that nature that then prevents the see-through.
I don't think that's...
You can't do, you can't do, you can't do masonry, temporary fencing of that, I don't think.
That's why I asked your definition of temporary, cause I don't think barbed wire with little fabric's gonna do much for lights.
Well, I mean, I can't see through, that's normal for construction.
Better than nothing, oh yeah, for construction, but not permanent.
Well, right, but this isn't...
What if this belt doesn't happen for ten to fifteen years and the rest? Then we're dealing with that, so.
That's my concern also.
I think it needs to be more permanent than temporary.
The problem is that it needs to be, it needs to be of the same material that you're building the other out of, that you could at least remove and reuse maybe. I don't know, but the thing is that it has to, it has to be there on a table. Because in the whole site plan, that's not gonna remain, right? So it's temporary and used, well, it won't because it's when the site plan is continued.
If it's put on the property line, it's, and they do the same, follow the same thing that they're doing against the hotel, yeah, it would stay, cause they'd put their berm up and put their landscaping on this side of the fence and the fence would stay.
So you're thinking of requiring that landscaping fence just...
Just the fence, except for behind the hotel, they have to do landscaping behind the hotel. But on that north boundary line, they have the fence so that it's blocking that off.
But don't we need to do the, don't we need to do the berm then too? And when we do the berm, don't we need to...
Well, I guess that's the question, because the planning commission, we talked about putting the fence on top of the berm. But your engineer, on the plans that he submitted that we saw tonight, have the fence on the property line and the berm on this side of the fence. So decide what you guys are gonna do and then we can decide what we're gonna require you to do.
Yeah, the key here, and this is what I went with planning over, is we have to remember that we are not getting use approval for anything else other than that. All we're trying to do is mitigate, but if we're gonna...
Correct, but this is all one piece of property right now, right? So this is all one big parcel?
Yes, but we're not getting approval for any other use on this, that's the key.
But you're getting use on this one parcel.
Right, and so I need to mitigate damage associated with this parcel. And the reality is, how do I do that effectively and work with the city to do that? That's kinda what we're discussing. How, I guess, when you're talking temporary and I'm talking temporary, I'm not, I'm not thinking of footings. If you're thinking of footings, cause we'd have to use the same material, then I think we're changing it a little bit. That may not be so temporary or, you know, I guess that's kinda what we're talking about. Are you thinking, Mayor, about and proposing that there are footings associated with the temporary fencing?
Honestly, I don't know about footings, but what my thought is that it's a, it's a, you know, appealing view. Like it's a, it's a material that looks decent, because it might be there for longer than a few days or a few months or a few weeks. That's gonna be there for possibly a few years. And so what I, what I don't want is to have some drab-looking, you know, fence there that then creates, the intent was to mitigate a concern and really it created one.
Two thoughts, right? The first one, for an either or, do we create some sort of a timeline? When the permanent fence has to be in place? The second option, as far as the temporary fencing, you know, any commercial development in a city has to have the big construction, commercial fencing that's a temporary fence, right? It has the fabric on it, looks nice, you can have them printed on. Sometimes they're just one color, something like that was the original thought that I had. You know, for doing a temporary one along that boundary, whether it's fifty, a hundred feet over and then down to the east side. So that's the one option that could be on the table. Or if the permanent fence, after doing the study and finding out the cost and if it's a reasonable request, is there some sort of a timeline that's associated to that?
Possibly. I guess my, yeah, I guess possibly a timeframe would work, but I think it would have to be, that mitigating factor would have to be in place before...
Before the hotel opens.
Before it opens.
Yeah, right. So we're talking construction timeframe. I mean, once we get through this approval, we still have to get our building permit, we still have to get everything else. So we're talking a year and a half to two years at least, right? Before that has to be in place, once the hotel is out. So we're talking, you know, right now in the context, it's current, when this is a ways down the road.
I would say the permanent fence has to be up before they open.
That's what I'm saying.
Temporary construction fence, yeah, you gotta do that and you wanna keep your construction safe. But the permanent fence, your landscape and all that's gotta be done before you open.
Before it opens.
You're talking across the entire border.
Yeah.
West end, west end north, I think.
If we're gonna approve this, it's eventually gonna get built out. I think for the benefit to the residents that are gonna be affected by that. I know it's probably a huge cost, but I would think they should put the whole fence up.
So I agree with that. My only concern is this, and I think the reasonableness standard is what we have to apply here. I think the best option is that the western and northern border have, the western border has landscaping and fencing and the northern border has fencing. That's the permanent proposed fencing. The only thing that concerns me is the reasonable, the reasonableness standard needs to be applied. And I don't, what I don't wanna do is say, you have to build all this permanent fencing so you can rip it out and redo it. If, does that make sense? Like, I don't know, I'm just saying we need the concern.
It doesn't have to be ripped out. They can build this whole system, facility out with that fence being up. They got access from Lambert and thirty-two. That should not affect that permanent fence. In my estimation.
And I'm not saying it does, I'm just saying that's the one thing I wanna consider is we don't wanna require a permanent solution that needs to be replaced before they're complete.
I do have some language, if you want me to read it and then you can, we can maybe shoot at a target, right?
Yeah.
So...
Cause I agree.
What we have here on light is an eight-foot composite privacy fence along the west, entire western boundary. And then privacy fencing along the portion of the northern boundary, at least along the length on which there are residences that are materially impacted by the vehicle lights, with the fence constructed of either an eight-foot composite privacy fence... fencing or a temporary fence. So what this, there's some legal language in there, and what I read it to mean, and I, I believe what Mr. Rudd reads it to mean, is when, when vehicles pull into that entrance and make that turn, we look at the length that their headlights will go, and any residences that are impacted by that headlights, the fence has to go at least that length. And, and then they have the choice of whether that's a permanent fence that matches the western, or that it be a temporary fence, but if it's a temporary fence, it has to be opaque, it can't be, right? The idea is light pollution, not...
Yeah, well, and, yeah, is there a way to, to legally ease that so that it's not a, not a eyesore-type fence, right? Like, I, I understand, like, I'm not trying to make it difficult, I'm not trying to cost you all any money, but I want to make sure that it's not...
Yes, you can, you can absolutely do that, we just need to know what that, what that is.
Trying to do the right thing, we actually did the wrong thing, does that make sense?
This is what we do, you know, when I'm working with city planners for the elderly as well, so what we can do is, one thing to add is the fifty feet on each side, we need to add that additional, not just the westerly boundary for the hotel, but also add fifty on each side, because we had talked about that, and then why don't we just make it subject, we will provide samples and make it subject to approval, you could say by a city planner, whatever, whoever you choose, it doesn't have to come before the council, but how, what, what we did in Oakley, it just, the, the city planner, um, had the approval for the materials and colors, something like that, or if you want, it can go back to, to planning, whatever you guys choose, but, um, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's a terrible option, however, I want to clarify one thing. My understanding, sorry, my understanding from the planning commission was that that, that buffering was going to be constructed from Lambert to the, uh...
Lord and Bur- boundary.
Right, but I'm saying, at least from Lambert to fifty feet beyond the hotel or whatever that is, is that, is that, is that still the deal, or am I missing something?
Okay.
I think that's what they're proposing.
If you have it from Lambert, then that's fine. And then it will go fifty feet past...
Past the hotel.
Yeah.
And then the length to the east of whatever it needs to be based on the impact.
So from Lambert, yeah.
I, I could be comfortable with that, as long as we have some approval for the materials.
What's the distance from the end of the hotel to the north property line?
So the question for the council is, who do you want to make the approval of the temporary fencing material? Do you, are you okay with it being?
I was gonna sugge- I, I know it's a little bit of a red tape, but I was gonna suggest the council, but...
Okay, that's fine. It can be at whatever level you want, you're, are you okay with council approval?
We're fine with that, we, we're more than that, if you, you, we are, we'll submit to whatever you want us to say.
Yeah, I, I, I think it, I think it's prudent to bring it to council, I, I know it's a little red tape-ish, but...
And we've got some time to find good materials that we think we should write.
Sure, and then, and then that temporary fencing, what, what's the height, do we have a height on it, is it this equal height, or is it, what are we talking about here?
My thought was six feet on the, on the side, on, on that side, but...
I'll talk into the microphone, but the, what I've just added based on that is a temporary fence of a size, quality, and material approved by the city council, and so you'll come back with whatever that is.
If we can find eight and six in the same, if you approve, you know, we can go, that is, that's fine, I think we'll have more options at six.
I, I think on that, on that northern boundary, I'd be comfortable with six, as long as it mitigates the problem, you know, I, I think that's the concern, um, it has to mitigate that concern, otherwise, there's no value there, so I, I'd be comfortable, I think at six, as long as it covers the concern. Anyone else?
I have a question for Katie on number one. It just says the fencing, are we not requiring them to put the, the shrivers in?
That's number three, is the raised berm.
Oh, okay. Tree b- from western boundary is shown on the landscape plan.
So that's...
That shows the whole length of it, or are we gonna require them to put the evergreen trees in there, or just the, from Lambert to fifty feet past the hotel?
From fifty, my understanding is from Lambert to fifty feet past the hotel would be the berm, the fence.
And the trees.
And the trees.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we, we don't show that, there, three. It says the western boundary, to me, that's the whole western boundary, from Lambert all the way to the north boundary.
Right, but we just changed that in too, so we just need to change the language in three still.
Okay.
Is that right? Is that, am I thinking right?
That's our change tonight, we, we, the western boundary, we're not considering the whole, but from Lambert and...
From Lambert to fifty feet past the hotel. But that would, that would be the, the fence, the berm, and the trees.
Right.
And then, and then that would continue beyond that in the future, but we'd still have an abutting, so squares off in that back corner, the, the northwestern corner would be fenced in, and that mitigates that concern. As long as that material is approved, and as long as it mitigates the lighting and noise concern there, I mean, it's quite a distance to the next home, so the noise is a, it's a concern, but it's not quite as large a concern, but the lighting is, for sure.
We, we, we need to fix three.
Yeah, three, three needs to change, because currently it reads just, uh, based on the landscape plan, which is just the hotel, right, so we need to change that to Lambert Lane.
Yeah, you need to add that in there.
Okay, so, let's just start with number one, is that good?
Yes, oh.
No, it needs to starting at Lambert Lane. Yeah, on the western boundary, starting at Lambert Lane, plus fifty feet past.
To the north.
So you're gonna go to that boundary, and then plus fifty feet?
Yeah, towards the north of the boundary.
So that'd be a hundred and fifty feet you're gonna leave open.
Whatever that is.
Fifty feet, yeah, north. Fifty feet north of the hotel. Right?
What's that?
Fifty feet north of the hotel.
Fifty feet north of the hotel, so it's only about a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet that's gonna be left open. So...
Adjoring northern boundary, privacy fencing, three needs to say, from Lambert Lane.
Can't read it like that, and it's too far on that one. So that should say eight-foot composite privacy fencing on western boundary. Beginning at Lambert Lane. So...
Extending, extending fif- to fifty feet on the corner?
Yeah, continuing, continuing to at least fifty feet beyond the northern corner of the hotel, I, I don't know, that needs to be a little more clear. Okay, so on number, on number one, eight-foot composite privacy fencing on western boundary, uh, starting at Lambert Lane.
And extending...
Extending north.
Do you guys go a hundred feet past the hotel boundary? A hundred feet rather than fifty?
I mean, away at three, we're most likely just gonna do the whole thing, but...
Extending, so are we going to, ex- extending north, one hundred feet beyond...
Beyond the...
Beyond...
Hotel.
Hotel corner, hor- northern, beyond northern hotel. Boundary.
Northern hotel boundary?
It's really not a boundary.
Huh? Not a bound...
Because it, it's not, we have something by today, so...
Beyond structure.
Yeah.
There you go.
I like that.
Okay.
I know.
No, we're not. Okay. Privacy fencing along portion of northern boundary, at least the length of which there are residents that are materially impacted by vehicle lights, with fence constructed of either an eight-foot composite privacy fencing or a temporary fence of size, quality, and material approvals to council, like it, raised berm and evergreen tree b- from western boundary, starting on Lambert Lane. That needs to, that needs to, number three needs to echo number one.
And we need to include the, the remaining western boundary that we're skipping with the permanent fence? Because the privacy fence is gonna end a hundred feet past the boundary.
Yep.
And then they need to do something temporary from there to the north boundary, and then they're gonna do the north.
Would you guys be willing to do the temporary fence up, up and around the corner to the permanent fence?
That's where the bulk of the homes are gonna be affected.
Right, but what's, but what's the, hold on, what's the point of, what's the point of going?
We're in an auction here.
What's the point of going?
I hope I don't get fired here, but I just talked to my client, and let me tell you, the goal was to not spend money that you couldn't, it wouldn't be good money, but in just talking with them, we've, if we're going a hundred feet past, we'll do the whole westerly, and then we have the right to go temporary north up to the northerly lot line, in case we have to bring something in or do any work over there, we won't have to rip that out, I think we could control the westerly boundary line, which is where all the homes are, um, and then, we know there's this home over, there, there's, there's much less risk of the homes over here, but we'll put the temporary at a minimum there, uh, if that works, and then we'll bring in the, the permanent, once we do civil, and that's at a minimum, if it makes sense, we'll do it all, uh, if it's not too cost prohibitive, but we'll do the whole westerly, uh, boundary line, and then if we need to, we'll do temporary on the northerly to mitigate, and I figure that, i- i- you know, you... That's, that's way more than what we were planning, but if that helps to mitigate the...
Okay, so, and then, and then we'll just keep the, we'll just keep the, uh, council approval on the material.
Yeah, yeah, if we do temporary...
Number two is still good. The num- the northern boundary has to have enough to block off the residents, and they will change one, that they'll do...
All the way, the whole westerly boundary line.
From Lambert to the northern...
And, and make it not for, make it not the hotel, but it needs to be the boundary line of the development.
Yeah.
So that it's clear.
The furthest, furthest, not northern property.
The westerly property line.
Entire western property.
To war, to the northerly, to the northerly boundary line, that's right.
Yeah, the whole box.
Yeah.
Permanently finished and then temporary on the north.
Either or, because if it makes sense to just continue on, if we don't think we're gonna have to rip it out, and we can do the civils, but at a minimum, if it, if we can do temporary, if we are going to, that means we can do it in phases, and we can try and not have to do something there to rip it out in the end. And it's as much the, the, any curbing berm, but it's also trees, if we throw trees in there, we don't want to rip those out, so, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I like it.
Appreciate it.
We got that?
Okay, so, number one should say eight-foot composite privacy fencing on western boundary, starting at, starting at Lambert Lane, extending to the northern property line. Starting the length of the northern property line?
No, 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 extending to the northern property line.
I'd like, like, toward the entire western boundary.
It's gonna be the whole western.
On the, on the, for the western, with the entire.
Of the entire.
Entire western boundary.
There you go.
We're winning. All right. Privacy fencing along the northern portion of the boundary, at least the length of which our residences that are materially impacted by the vehicle lights, so that's still good. Raised berm and evergreen on, okay, so this is the next question, are, are we talking about just the fence, are we talking about the berm and the trees all the way to the north? Well, it's the western boundary, but all the way to the northern boundary. Fully constructed, berm, trees, fence, that's what we're talking about. That's what we're talking about.
The, the fence, the fence, yes, but I don't think the whole landscaping impacts, you, you'll be, we're, 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 we're civil, and, and, so I would say, I would say the trees stop.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
The trees should stop a hundred feet past the hotel bound.
So you can change that fifty to a hundred?
From Lambert all the way.
Yeah. From Lambert to a hundred feet. Past hotel structure.
Perfect. Delivery and trash pickup only allowed during daytime hours ninety-seven, installation of load is believed by elimination of outdoor amenities, we got that, reduce lighting intensity during late hours, that's good, no parking signs on Lambert, and have we then added our, did you already add the signage for thirty-two access? Okay, that's in somewhere else, okay, all right. Go down, everything to eight is good. Distance about fifty feet between hotel structure and residence parking lot, we need to manage water enough, that's good, that's good, studying is tall, and, and, and there's the truck, so that's... Okay. I think we got it. Anything else? Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion on the conditional use permit for, for Enstis Highlands.
I guess I do have a question before we do too far.
How many are there, are there thirteen?
You suggested that we table the site plan.
And I could just say that, right?
That's not part of the...
I could just say them all.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Like, one, through fourteen, that's, okay.
Okay.
Okay, here I go.
So, so hold on, the, hold on, the, the question was, Scott had recommended, uh, tabling the site plan, this is not part of that motion, this is the conditional use permit only, so these conditions that the planning commission, staff and council have talked about for the conditional use permit, that's what we're making a motion of. Go ahead.
All right, so I'll make a motion to pass the conditional use permit for the Highlands Hotel concept with the conditions one through fourteen from the planning commission.
And staff.
And, and staff.
Can I offer a restatement?
Yes, yes.
So the, the motion, as I heard it, is to approve the conditional use permit for the Hotel Highlands Commerce Center, CUP, with the conditions one through fourteen, as noted by staff and discussed by council.
Yes, is that your motion?
Yes, that, that's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Can we do a counter motion, or no? Or just nay?
Um, so not, you can't make a counter motion now, you, if the motion either gets a second and gets voted on or, and dies, or, or doesn't get a second and dies, or then we can have another motion after that, so this either needs a second or dies. I'll second it. Okay.
Is it roll call?
Yeah. So, Shiana?
Aye.
Clayton?
Aye.
Mayor's aye, Sam?
Aye.
And Clinton?
Nay.
Okay, so the motion passes. Okay, next agenda item, thank you. Okay, um, the audit, we're going to, Ben's not here, we're going to skip the audit, it's in... Can, can we hold the, the noise down? We still have some items to get through, and it's hard to hear, thank you. Um, so the, the audit information, there's nothing to pass or vote on, it, it is, the information is in last month's Dropbox, if you want to review that. Um, if you have questions, we can get, um, get you in touch with either Suzanne, myself, or the auditor, and we can, we can address those concerns, and we can even discuss it next, at next month's meeting, but for purposes of tonight, let's move beyond that unless someone has a problem, and we can review it later. Okay. The next is the commercial development, uh, Hotel Highlands Commerce Center, so this is the site plan portion, this is the other portions of that.
I'll pull that up.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I think I was a little quick on getting, yeah, we still have that to do, so, thank you. So we've got a few motions related to the commercial development that we need to look at tonight. So we've got a few motions related to the commercial development that we need to look at tonight. Okay. I'll go back to the planning commission recommendations, just remembering that they, um, are positive on all of these, three to one. On the site plan, they did say to follow the city engineer's recommendation. Okay, staff recommendation are there, so first up is parking.
Okay. So.
Just to review, um, they're required to have sixty-nine parking spots, they have eighty.
Right, so that, that portion is basically non-issue.
We're motioning each one of these, or are all of them together?
Katie, do you wanna do each individual item as its own motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, stand by. It's hot.
You're in the wrong seat then, tall man. Come sit over here, it's pretty warm.
Why, why can I not find the parking?
In my staff report, or where are you looking?
I don't know.
I, I had your staff report a minute ago, but now I can't find it either. Okay, so, just give me a minute.
Right there.
Oh. I forgot I had that green key.
In the staff report, parking. I've lost my mind at this point. What page is it on in the staff report?
Uh, three.
Old man. Okay, so they, I mean, we, we've obviously discussed, they meet all of the requirements, plus some excess. Is there any discussion regarding, um, the parking plan as presented?
I have none.
If not, I'll take a motion on the parking plan.
A motion, we approve the parking plan?
Second?
Second.
Okay, Shiana seconds, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Next.
The site plan.
Is this, is the site plan in order?
In the interest of time, um, the biggest thing that I think we need to talk about is, I've recommended curb gutter and sidewalk on both sides of the road. Does the city council agree with that, or do they wanna do something different? And then, we can just table it till next time, but if we know what, we're gonna do a sidewalk, then we can give them some direction to get the designs in place.
So I, as, personally, I support the curb and gutter on both sides, I think that is a better option. Do we wanna add that and then, and then table it, or just add that and then we don't need to table it, is that what you're saying?
Just give us that direction, and then table it, because we need to come back.
We need to get the plans, okay. So my, my recommendation is that it has curb and gutter on both sides, anyone else have?
I, I agree.
Okay, so I, I, I take it that's the direction, so I'll take a motion on the site plan.
I'll make a motion that we tabled it, the site plan, until.
Till we receive the plans and.
Till we receive the revised plans.
Till they submit plans and they're approved.
The revised plans.
Revised, I'll second that.
Sure, but quickly.
Okay. Okay, so, so curb gutter and sidewalk, it's a kind of a complicated issue, because if you look at our full build-out plan, on the western boundary of that, uh, of the road coming up off of Lambert, our future vision is that we would have parking and essentially entrances to parking for the grocery store. Um, so if we run curb gutter and sidewalk all the way up that, we would essentially be ripping it back out at this state, or when we move to that stage, this is a great, great example, so, so we have it along the east side of the, of the road coming off of Lambert, but in front of what we envisioned to be the store, you've got those little, uh, essentially landscape islands. So that's been our hesitance and our reluctance to put it into this point. And so that's, that's, I just would like you to know the, the whole story behind that before, uh, considering anything, so.
You could ask for a bond to complete the other half, if they don't move forward with the, the second part of the development.
That, that's, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I, so I, I would actually be comfortable with that, I, I think that there's, you know, value in having it if, if it's gonna stay as a roadway for an extended period of time, but if it's not, then sure, I think that also makes sense, so I think, I think that gives you some direction. Let's look at the plans that provide those options, and then we can move forward on it from there.
Okay, yeah, bond on it if we don't do, okay, perfect.
Okay, so the motion to table has been made.
I second that.
There has been a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any, any opposed? That's unanimous, next. The architectural design standard and materials, is that where we're at?
Yes.
Any questions, concerns, um?
That's the code, I can.
Changes you'd like to see in the architectural design?
I wonder if you want me to pull that back?
It, the architectural design was, um, forwarded to the city council with a positive recommendation from the planning commission, so they've looked at it, they've recommended a positive, uh, or they've given a positive recommendation. If there's any questions, concerns, or changes you'd like to see? If there aren't any, I'll entertain a motion on the architectural design and materials.
I'll motion to approve the architectural design and materials.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Okay, that's also unanimous, next. Outdoor lighting plan, um, as is detailed in the staff report, they're allowed, oh, where's the number, two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand lumens, they come in at two-hundred-and-twelve thousand lumens, they've also, um, agreed to cut the, the.
By fifty percent?
Right, the lighting intensity, holy cow. They, they've, uh, they've agreed to cut the lighting intensity from eleven PM to seven AM, which is actually a, a pretty big concession, considering there's actually an exception in the code, that would allow them to keep fully illuminated, um, through those nighttime hours, so I think there's some pretty good, um, concessions there as well. Also, the lighting plan was also forwarded to the council with a positive recommendation from the planning commission. Any questions, concerns, changes from council on lighting? I like, I like lights, but I also like dark, so I'm always torn on lights.
I'll make a motion that we approve the lighting plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? No. So that passes unanimous as well, next item. Is that everything?
That's it, yeah.
Four, four items.
We won. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the city center, city center zone architecture review, uh, code text amendment. This is the code text amendment from three stories to four stories, that's been proposed, that, um, was, had a split vote last commission meeting. Katie, do you wanna talk about your staff report? I mean, I know we've seen it, but the public hearing's already been held on this, um, item, so this is a, a discussion for the council once we get going.
Yes, so, uh, not gonna read much from this. Uh, everyone was here last time, just as a refresher, everyone except for Clint, so if you have any questions, let me know if I skip something. Um, so the last meeting, this received a tie vote, two to two, um, it was tabled until we had a full quorum, so here we are. Um, just as a reminder, this is looking at the architectural review code for the city center zone. Right now, it says that you can have a three-story building, and we're looking at, um, changing that to four-story. There's the ordinance, let me pull up the actual. Just keep scrolling, okay, this is the code amendment itself, this is what it would look like, and this is the, um, sorry, it had red on it before where I changed it. Here we go, this will be with the change, before it had red showing the change, said three before, this will be four. Um, there was a, a public comment on this at the last meeting, so we don't need one tonight.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah, thank you, it's getting late. Um, so we already had a public hearing on this one, and that's it for me.
Alright, any concerns, questions, comments from council?
If it's allowed and okay, can I ask Rusty to step up here, and I wanna ask him four questions? They'll be fast.
I, I suppose you can ask him, it doesn't necessarily impact, I mean, it's not, it's not directly tied to his project. This is, this is a zoning, um, ordinance, or a zoning code, um, so it's not necessarily relevant to his, it's not specifically relevant to his project, if that makes sense.
Okay, well, I can wait till he comes back in, if I do have four specific questions, but if we wanna wait till next, in two weeks?
I, I think that's probably best, because this, this is, this is not project specific, this is zone specific.
For just the zone, okay.
Well, I'll just rea- reiterate what I said last month. This is how we have control of what happens, right? We have to vote according to code, so this is a code amendment that is being proposed, so we, we have a decision now that we're not limited to following code, we get to make the code. I don't see four stories being needed, I think it's too big. We obviously have developments that are happy to be here and, and coming in front of us at three stories or less, so I think it's, if it's trying to solve a problem, I think it's solving a problem we don't have, we can always revisit it later if it became a problem. Um, and I think when we're asking for public opinion, especially when it comes to making codes, what do people wanna see in the city? Pretty overwhelming that most people don't want four stories, I'm one of them, I don't want four stories, so I don't see us needing it right now, that's my, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, any other comments from council? Clint, you got anything? Anything from Sam?
Don't, we spoke last month.
Alright, um, so, so this is where I get myself in trouble. Um, I, I've, I've thought about this pretty extensively in the last, um, month or so, and I've, I've had some conversations with folks in town, and while I'm not certain that, um, the few people you talk to is necessarily representative of the entire city, I think there's some valid concerns and some valid points that, that were brought up, um, that I had not considered previously. Um, and while the, the height will remain at forty-five feet, um, I actually think that there's some, there's some benefit in allowing the forty-five foot height, but restricting that to a three-story building in, in the ability to, uh, really change the look of those buildings, and the look of the entire zone, and the projects that, that become a part of that, um, you know, one thing I think that, that, I don't, I don't think it's lost on the council, but something to consider is many of these decisions are not just today, they're twenty, thirty, maybe even a hundred-year type decisions, where we're gonna be having these buildings with us for quite some time, and so I think there's some valid, uh, some validity to having the, 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 a little bit higher height, um, availability, but being able to, to really play with the elevations and the roof lines within that height at a three-story, um, makes for some better architectural design. So I, here I am flipping and flopping, but there, there, there it is, so. I'll, I'll entertain a motion on the, uh, city center zone architecture review code text amendment.
I'll make a motion to deny the city center zone architecture review code a text amendment.
Okay, is it?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the mayor's aye?
Aye.
Clint?
Aye.
Nay.
Did you vote? Okay, so, do we get that? Uh, Sam seconded, Shiana is nay, everyone else is aye. Okay, moderate income housing policy. This is a policy for how we deal with applications that come to the city for moderate income housing that exists within specific developments, so, Stuart Ranches, for instance, has some moderate income housing. Those people have to qualify for that, we need a process and a policy for how to deal with those.
Right, right, so, so this isn't about whether or not we are going to look at having de-disstricted housing, or moderate income housing, or expanding that. This is how we are, a policy for handling the applications that we are getting for moderate income housing, specifically, could be any that we get with our de-restrictions, but these are specifically from Stuart Ranches that we're getting right now. And we need to have a policy in place for how we handle those. So, we have to make sure they have, we verify that income is less than a hundred-and-twenty percent of the AMI, um, for Summit County. Then we also have to verify owner occupancy, that's one of the eligibility criteria, and they have a preference if they're a first-time home buyer. There is a process for verification, and then the de-restriction and restrictions and enforcement section. And also amendments and sunset provisions are covered too, this was a policy sent from our city attorney Brad.
Okay, any questions, concerns, comments on the uh, policy for dealing with moderate income housing applications? Has everyone reviewed it? Okay.
I have, and I just have one, I think I know the answer. And it's gonna sound really late.
Too late, can't have something else.
Could we, does it have to go off of Summit County? Or can we do moderate income for just Camas Valley? Cause there's quite a difference in Summit County and.
It does have a difference, but our moderate income housing agreements and our code say that we go off the Summit counter, Summit County AMI.
Okay, that's what I thought you said.
So for now, yes.
Is that something we can change?
Yeah, is that, I don't know, maybe think about it, but.
Cause I know we're doing the code review, so is that something, will it get changed in the Camas Valley?
Wouldn't have to do with what we're.
I think what you'd have to verify is where you can get the data.
Okay.
And the data tends to be collected at census tract level, and I just don't know offhand whether that, whether you could limit that to the Camas Valley, or whether you'd have to go to, at the actual county level.
But, okay, if that's a road we can take, we can come back, read it at this and change that.
Sure, yeah.
Well, yeah, and this doesn't even say, it just says has to have a gross household income less than a hundred-and-twenty percent of the AMI is determined, oh, it does say Summit County, so.
So for now, though, this is gonna apply, because we have current applications, we, we gotta have a policy to deal with them, but I, but I think that there is some validity in reviewing that. That has been one of the main concerns that we've been up against, is everybody wants moderate income housing, and then it's set based on the AMI of Summit County, and we all know that that sucks.
That's not gonna apply to you all. I, I think you just have to look at where you can get accurate data to be able to calcu- run that calculation, and if you can get it at a more local level, do it.
Okay, so I think we can add that to one of the things that we're reviewing in the code review.
Yes, please.
Um, but for purposes of tonight, we're voting on the.
Right, but I don't know, it'll be retroactive.
No, it wouldn't.
The agreements we already have, but maybe going forward.
Sure.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a policy now, but maybe we can get a better one later.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take a motion on the moderate income housing policy.
I'll make a motion to approve the moderate income housing policy.
Second.
Alright, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes unanimous? What? Clint, yeah. Okay, next item. The restaurant tax grant.
Yeah, okay, so.
Thanks, guys.
It's that time of year where, um, we have our application coming up at the end of the month for the restaurant tax grant. Last year, we were granted almost sixty-five thousand dollars to make some upgrades to our concessions shack, and then we also had some money for marketing, and I think there was something else, and.
Yeah, a big, a big part of it was marketing, and then that, that addition to this, um.
Yeah, so last year we had marketing, poster, like, printing, photography.
The mailers.
Yeah, merchandise, we didn't get money for that, but we asked for it, prize money, that was it, that was a big one.
Well, prize money was a big one, and I think we should include that again.
Yeah, and then the concessions additions, so we, in total, last year, we asked for seventy-one thousand two hundred, we received sixty-seven four. So it was pretty good, and that was for, um, the prize money, marketing, and the concessions addition.
Right.
So we gotta think about what we wanna ask for this year.
So two things right off, I. So, two things right off, I think, um, the advertising, um, I think we should include that, maybe at a, a little lower rate.
Yeah.
I'm not convinced that some of the money we're spending advertising is well-spent, maybe, but I, I think we should look at that. The other thing is that, uh, I think the prize money is really big, especially if we're considering going to a two-day rodeo rather than the rough stock deal on Monday, which, um, we can talk about a little bit later, maybe even next week, but the, the dollar figure to change to two-day rodeo versus the, what we've been doing is pretty minimal, so it's basically wash, just for gee whiz. So I think the prize money, marketing at a, at a, at a lower rate, and then possibly even increasing our overall ask for bleachers because we sold out last year, hopefully we sell out this year, but I would like to be able to, you know, fill in some of the corners and some of the empty space in our arena seating that would help sell more tickets, and, you know, this is, this is specific to bringing visitors from outside. It's helpful if we have more seating, so I, I would like to add those things, but I'm hoping that suggestions are...
Is it, is this the one where they prefer it to, like, affect tourism?
Yeah.
Yes, it is, they're trying to get more people into the restaurants, so it's good if we can, um, have projects that would bring people in, like, marketing. I think expanding the bleachers, that's definitely the, something that would appeal to them. Prize money too, that helps our event be more competitive and brings in better contestants. So, I think those are all good ideas, we can...
Concessions, does that apply?
Could, we did get a pretty good chunk last year for the concessions.
Which we still have to do, that construction.
I hear, what are you doing for that?
Honestly, about like the actual...
The, are you?
Oh, the food, probably not.
That's all?
That's too bad.
No, I think they're trying to get people to...
So we talked about it a couple years ago.
Yeah.
You were, uh, expanded kitchen. I guess how far can you go, can we get our own bounce houses, is that something we do, like, I don't, I'm not really quite sure, like, what they're...
Yeah.
I think, you know, the three categories that we have that we've suggested sound really good, and I think that's gonna be a pretty big ask already.
The bleachers will be huge, but, but we, but also it doesn't hurt to have other things in case they're like, well, we'll give you this, this, and this, but the bleachers are too much. You know what I mean, like, it doesn't hurt to have some other options in there.
Yeah, we could have like half the bleachers, one side this year, one side the other year, because they usually do ask, okay, if we can't give you all the money, then...
Then what do you want to do?
What could you do with part of it?
What could you do?
Yeah.
Well, Lee doesn't like the city purchasing, the, the bounce houses and things like that.
The insurance company.
Sure, makes sense. What about like entertainment equipment? Like speaker system, I know we use Byrins a lot, like...
For the movie night, we do.
That actually, that actually might apply because it's part of the event that brings people here, I mean, that, that, that may not be a bad ask. And it's not a huge dollar figure, it's just...
Yeah, it should be insane, but I know that's something we have to source every year.
No, I think that's a good idea.
Just for movie night, or for the...
For whatever, like...
For the whole rodeo.
If, if we even have any other event.
Yeah, I think mostly for the, for like, maybe even say like, uh, I think mostly the movie night, because like, a concert brings their own...
Yeah.
The rodeo, we're, we're never going down, so someone that operates a rodeo, but...
But if you have like a Christmas celebration or something, it's like, just for, you know, public events.
I think that's worth throwing in there.
Okay. So speakers, entertainment system?
Yeah.
Do we have our own flag? I mean, Francis City doesn't have a flag, but maybe something to
We, we actually do have a flag, but...
Design a Francis City flag and have the queens or something running around, I mean, that's not very much money either, but that's something that would last forever.
I think we should consider that, I don't know if we need to ask for that to grant, though. I, I do that, but...
I mean, it's just kind of, it's not cheap, but it's something that we should do.
Well, but yeah, it's, it's something that we could, we could find in the budget, though.
Yeah, especially with, if we're getting the two-day rodeo, hey, that's a, you know, you guys are really broke.
No, I think that, I think that's a valid point, I'm, I'm just not sure it's something we need to add.
Okay.
I think we could probably find that in the budget.
So about those four things, and then marketing, last year we, our main mark, we didn't do the, um, this thing we had done the two years prior, working with Oxygen Marketing. Instead, we sent out the flyers to, um, pretty much everyone in Francis, and then a lot of Wasatch County, it was the mass...
Right.
The mass mailer.
Mass mailers, thank you.
Because, because the intent is to bring outside...
Every door to red. Yeah.
I, I, we did sell out last year, it seemed effective, maybe we've got the word out and people know about us, I don't know how much... I think that cost about ten thousand last year from what I remember, so...
I think we should, I think we should probably still do that.
Okay, so same marketing as last year, look at that, okay.
We talked about doing a marketing survey, was that something we did?
Don't remember.
We did it a couple years ago.
We did it a couple years ago, yeah, we had a couple hundred...
Wasn't too many responses.
Wasn't too many responded.
Most of it was word of mouth, and people hadn't seen, that's part of why we didn't redo the same marketing campaign, because they hadn't seen...
Hadn't seen or heard the radio ads and stuff, yeah.
Okay.
So prize money, same as last year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Many people were surprised when we returned to Milwaukee last year.
Yeah, well, and I...
They weren't surprised you were mad.
They weren't mad. Yeah, they were not happy.
They're mad, they're surprised.
Maybe we should...
But that's why I said, I think we need to do something in advance for citizens of the town, we come in in advance.
Yeah, well, I think we'll...
I was gonna bring that up in, in the Frontier Days, but...
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that, I think that's a valid point as well. Okay, so you got those items?
Yep, and I'll work with Scott on getting a cost estimate on the bleachers.
Between Scott and Luke, we can get that.
Maybe I'll talk to Byron about the entertainment system, see what he has, and see if he can get me pricing on the bleachers.
Something similar.
Yeah.
Let's, uh, let's, if everyone's okay with, let's, um, postpone the Frontier Days discussion in interest of time, we'll talk about it in the next meeting. Everyone good with that?
Yep.
The Veterans Memorial, you're here.
You are still here?
Still.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying.
Not the longest day ever.
Wow, so, so, so this is really just a matter of how much, I, I think we all agree we want to do something.
Yes.
How much do we want to invest in this? My feeling personally is, I'll get this out of the way to start with, and then you guys can take it from there. My per, my personal feeling is, I think we should support it, um, but I don't think we should go hog wild considering it's not in our city.
Yeah.
There you go.
Oh, is this the Veterans Memorial that's in Camas? Yeah, I did see that email. So there are different options, bench, brick?
So maybe you can explain the options real quick again, so everyone has them, and then we can...
Talk about just brick, and the bricks, um, run two fifty, and Oakley can have a, a eight-by-eight brick, I mean, excuse me, Francis. Oakley has chosen to do a bench, and there is room for two benches. They have a bike house, is what Oakley has done.
Can I ask Suzanne, how much do we have in that fund? We have, that's a...
It, it would have to be discretionary, because...
What is a thousand, is that what?
Yeah.
That's what it was last year, wasn't it? I think that is all we have, right? About a thousand in that discretionary fund?
My, my personal feeling is, I, I think this is a very good thing, and we, we've traditionally and historically and want to continue to support veterans programs and things that honor veterans. I mean, that, that has been our thing, and I think we want to continue that, where this is not necessarily in our city, I think we want to, I think we want to certainly support it and, and do that, but also without going crazy, because there's, there's some ideas I have that, like, I, I would like to install a flag somewhere in Camas. I would actually like to see Francis, Camas, and Oakley have a huge flag, so that when you're on the western side of the city, or the, of the valley, when you're entering this valley, what you see is three big flags across this valley, I think would be really neat, but anyway, that's a, that's a huge expense, and I think money well-spent in our own city versus somewhere else, and my personal feeling is, let's do the two fifty for brick, and I think that's supporting and...
I agree.
It's just my thoughts, we don't have to stick with that.
Oh, that's fine. Wish we had the resources at Oakley and Camas, but...
Right, well, we, we soon may, but we don't...
We, we, in two years, we might.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so...
So do we need a motion, or do we just have to say, hey, we'll give you...
Yeah, let's make a motion.
Then I'll make a motion that we donate, that's probably not the right word.
Say purchase a brick from the Veterans Memorial.
Purchase a brick from the Veterans Memorial for two hundred and fifty.
I'll second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that passes. Will you get, uh, with Suzanne, get her the information, we'll get you taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I don't want, I don't want to, uh, delay this too much, um, but I would like to suggest that we table the reappointment of the planning commissioner one more time. I have some, some reasons for that, but I don't want to speak to those in a public setting. And, and make it something it doesn't need to be, so...
I'll agree to that.
I agree.
I agree, that's good.
So I move we table it?
Second.
Second, or, yeah, I...
Aye?
I'm tired, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So I made your motion, is that a second?
I made the motion, Shanna seconded it.
Shanna seconded.
Shake, put Shanna here.
I, I jumped ahead of Sam, yeah.
Oh, did Sam second it?
That's fine, she can say that he...
Shanna seconded it.
I don't care.
I said so. All right, um, council reports, anything from the council?
My saddle's ordered, my buckles will be here, and we...
I know, I paid for it.
I'm sorry. May thirty-first.
May thirty-first?
Keep that open, you need all the help I can get.
Good deal.
Lindsay needs all the help she can get.
Is that here or in Camas this year?
In Camas this year.
Great.
I know this is not the time of year, but have you, well, I know you've been on foot, have quite a bit, you noticing all the potholes that we're noticing?
We like potholes.
No, we don't.
Hey, you can't... You can't have it both ways, you can't have nice roads and speed control.
Jeremy will be taking Ryan's...
Look at that, when Fred, when Foddy Hill got resurfaced, I was fine with it, I don't, I do twenty-five on Foddy Hill.
I know.
And I get old, run over a lot.
Hilltop is bad.
I do, but everybody else doesn't.
Hilltop is bad, okay, planner reports?
Just a reminder that we have a meeting in two more weeks, we get to do this again.
We should have had three meetings.
Engineer reports?
I just want to report, we've received, we took third place in the water contest in the water...
Oh, yeah, thanks for bringing that up. That's important, that's a big deal.
That is a big deal.
Beaver, is, is that Beaver's? They donate every year?
Was, um, New Harley, something?
What in the world?
Never heard of it, it's a smaller little place, but...
Well, how many times, we won it once?
We've got first, second, third already, this is our second third.
Oh, I thought we...
Working our way back up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we all live the cycle.
It's good water.
All right. Anything else, Scott? Um, I'll, I'll point out, in the mayor reports, we did get Rocky Mountain Power taking care of for the well, so that's in motion. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Uh, make a motion to adjourn. I'll second that one.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, 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 aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie, for...
I enjoyed doing it, though.
I appreciate, we appreciate your...
Let's see, flip at me. Are you lying?
I don't wish more than this to Mayor. At least Fleming's.
Sir, lost and found in the new building.
Yeah, here, just leave it here.
Who was that young kid?
Porter?
Porter.
Tucker Mead? Why are you laughing for? You were.
It's seven o'clock.
Yeah.
That's your event, man, it's you.
My what?
It was May thirty-first.
Yeah.
I was gonna text him, but I don't have it.
Okay, got it, got it, got it.
Come on now.
And I have to, we have like, have, have a fire and candles, so we go together, okay?
He got me off, he got that number.
But we'd be like that, but...
All right, everybody travel home soon.
Thank you, you travel safe.